Based on, I do like your twelfth grade.
Good?
Yeah.
Except I just realized it was Tuesday. I've been thinking all morning it was Wednesday. So I'm rolling up now but it's almost missing.
It's never been a day or two in me. How was your dinner?
It was good. We haven't had dinner and then we went by the grocery store. We came home for the kids. It was good. We're not more. My teacher. We wanted to eat. The kids home. They're alright.
But.
It wasn't bad.
Yeah. They need they can have all their stuff.
Oh wow.
Okay, great. Awesome. Really exciting story.
I'm not making it up.
I know, definitely. You guys are live.
Now they just steal it digitally.
Yeah, you wouldn't do that back in the, like sixties.
Which you can burn it.
Well, I'm recording.
Yes, sir.
College workshop of the city book group order is March fourteenth. Friday as we announced. And I'd ask everyone to rise for non silence and say, or the. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and freedom of the. Honor of the Texas flag, that led to the invasion of many of the. Undergone one and individual. That's on this here.
Yeah, and just like. We'll take it down, sorry.
All right, so I have a group forum and we have a workshop, the purpose of which is to work with Casey and Art Texas IT. To go over how the SharePoint file structure works so that council members can get into city folders and get information that they need in a timely manner from their computers. And and a couple of rules of the road to credit. If you can get in there, you can also possibly mess things up, and we don't want that guy. Casey.
So and we can leave with that a little bit. And so if you do get in there and mess things up, the nice part about SharePoint is there's some version history built in just by default. You know, if you want to screw up files, you can usually go back a few versions. But then also the city has that stuff backed up by third party software as well. So if you delete something, mess it up, whatever, we should always go go back. Same software that does all your email backups for the 40 requests. So so there's some advantages to having it up there and and no, yes, you could screw some things up that affects everyone's document. But there's also a number of different ways you can reference it. So that's good. Back in the old days, it was your floppy disk you were out of like. So and we touched on this a little bit last time. I think last time we met, we talked about Chromebooks mostly, how to use a Chromebook, you know, how those were set up to get your email thing. We kind of started talking about SharePoint, but it wasn't really time yet. And so this meeting is is kind of going forward a step now. And so the city has taken some time and set up some SharePoint shares to where you guys can all work and share data effectively. You don't have to worry about downloading and then changing and uploading and all that. You can work straight out of the portal. You know, changes you make happen immediately and and you guys can all share it. You guys can even be in the same document at the same time. And you can see that, you know, Jeff's up top and Bob's at the bottom and I'm in this cell doing something. It's pretty neat. You're able to kind of collaborate from anywhere you are. So with that said, I mean, I know that some of you guys are going to use Chromebooks probably, some of you guys are going to have personal devices. You can even do this stuff on a mobile device depending on how much you want to entangle yourself, myself. I've got it everywhere, but because I not all people want that. So but it will, it'll go on any mobile device, whether it be Apple or Android, it'll go on your Windows computer, your Mac. And you can just do it from a simple web browser. You could be in a business center in a hotel somewhere on their computer. And as long as you've got your passwords and stuff, you'll be able to access. So it's very versatile. So let's start at just kind of the top level and I'll show this to you and then I'll help any of you gain access if you need.
Is there a Blair?
Better, better, yeah.
I think I left this log in actually, so we can actually go do all that. So if you guys go to, and I can make the shortcuts for all this stuff, you don't even really have to remember all this, but if you go to portal.office.com, which is also, I believe, office.com now. This brings you to that same interface we talked about last time. This is where your email is. This is where you kind of get to all things Microsoft or the city. Once you log into it, if you click these little dots up in this top left corner right here, you'll have a SharePoint option there. I wonder if I might go to pin that somewhere even. If you click SharePoint, it's going to open another tab. Now, inside here, you will see any groups that you are a member of at the city. So anything you have rights to or they've created for you, you'll be able to see that group here. Currently, there's one called City Council Data, which is supposed to refresh the city council. I don't know why it's not. I think I'll pick that. But if you click on this group, now this is if you were in any computer anywhere, you could do this. Web browser, you can do this from anywhere. It doesn't have to be your computer or city computer. You can get to it from anywhere you want. I'm going to show you this part first and then I can make this a little easier on you, but. So if you go into SharePoint, find your group, click it. Inside of that group, there's going to be documents.
So if I don't have that group.
Yeah, we don't have that group.
So the very first time you go to it, you'll have to search it. And then once you've searched it the first time, it'll it'll pull up the next time. So like if you're in there, in SharePoint. Search SharePoint right there and just type City Council Data broadly for now.
I've got City Wood Creek change side, is that the?
City change the city council once I log into it and we've got it out of it again.
Yeah, so click on it. And you'll kind of be where I'm at and you'll be documents where you're going to go. Now, if you have a Windows machine, I'm going to show you how you can sync all that to your machine if you want to, because you don't have to go through this every time. It's basically just a folder, which makes it like a landing there for you.
You can get me to where you are.
Yeah. Nice. So yeah, so click your dot from the top left corner there.
Which. Hold those.
And then SharePoint, which is right down to your left there. And once you're that far, you're going to type in City Council Data. The first time you have to do that, the first time it'll show up with everybody in there. Yeah, there you go. Click the first.
There's a way to make.
I'm using larger.
That's where you should.
Okay, that can, that's where I'll make some shortcuts because you can get.
Yeah.
So now if you want to, then. What I can do is I can.
So anybody has a Windows machine, if you want to sync the folders, you can make a way and I'll show you how, I'll show you where that's at. Now, if you have a Chromebook or an Android phone or something, you'll have to kind of do it on an app or a web browser again. If you want to sync it to Windows, it must be easier that way.
But the thing is, if you're on a Chromebook, you're all web based anyway. So you go up and you go into one of these folders, you go into one of those documents and you're in the web version of that document and you're in collaborative footing, do whatever you want. When you get out of it, it's all saved. It's all exactly as you left it. So it works great. You don't have to download it. You don't have to do anything.
Suzanne, is there anywhere in here that would have a Word document, not a PDF, something that's editable? I don't have to like.
Yeah, go to the documents, go to City Board Creek.
No.
Go.
Okay.
Go to two thousand thirteen.
Twenty three.
Twenty three, yeah. Then go into today's date. And then click Agenda or Sporting Documents. Here's that word.
So what Jeff, what Jeff's saying basically is if you come in here and again, you don't have that software on your machine, you can open one of these documents right here on the web browser. And when you do, you'll have all the editing tools at the top, just like you were using Microsoft Word. But you don't have to have a software installed necessarily. You can edit a document right here on the web browser and the minute you make a change, you can even see right now it says save at the top. The minute I come in here and put anything in here, I'll put a period, it goes into saving real quick and then it goes right back to save. So the minute you make any changes, it's saved. So you don't have to worry about hitting the save button. You know, you don't have to worry about it. You closed it, your computer restarted and didn't save it. This is how our entire company operates like this because it made life a lot easier.
It was me just changing the notice that it said.
Yep. And so you guys can see that even I'm in there, but Jeff's in there too. So I mean, nobody can sneak in on you. I mean, you're going to see him when they're in there. But you guys can work on stuff together, you know, and it's live. Like I can see what he's doing as we speak. So it's got a lot of, a lot of little collaborations, but you can get on a call and just sit there and work on documents and be, you know, anywhere you want to be.
And staff can control which documents can't be edited as well, like.
You can, you can. Yeah. As it stands right now, the way the permissions are set, anything that's in your city council chair, that is not, it's set to editable. I mean, you can edit things.
Most final documents are going to be in PDF form and so it'll be harder to change.
But you guys have the record of the.
Correct. Correct. If it's in a, if it's in a Word document, it's probably more up to be changed either on purpose or accident. And so more, the more official stuff like resolutions that will be on here, what was it, ordinance resolutions, whatever, those are going to be in PDF form rather than Word.
But let's say that we're working on resolutions, a proclamation for Friday. And and we have a Word document in the resolutions thing and we say, hey, Bob, can you go in there and check? I'm not sure what the last, we're not sure what the ten digits are after the decimal point. Can you check that, you know, Bob and Gooden there? In a Word document, he can change it. Once he's signed off on that, it's okay, we're all good now. Edit it, we're good to go, then convert it to PDF and we're done.
And and you'll notice when we convert everything over, there'll be a place where most of the Word documents will be and then everything else will just be for your reference. Like I said, ordinance is resolutions, financials, everything like that will be in separate folders to help you find it. And so really all the Word documents should kind of be in one place to work on. If that makes sense. And we can make each council member their own folder in there too, or whatever, you know, we're going to come up with.
Prove to that in the, in the web version of the software, the web version of Word, it's not quite as full featured as the the, the program itself. So, you know, you may have, I mean, don't get hung up on formatting and things, just sort of keep things simple.
Yeah, and it's going to be really easy to clutter this if we're not careful with saving forty documents of the same thing. So whatever we can do to lower that, but we're not gonna, if it's on there, we're not going to go in there and delete it. This is y'all's folder to do.
Well, these are basically shortcuts to the main folder.
Yeah.
What kind of stuff do you want us uploading? I mean, I don't do, when I, you know, deal with this kind of sheriff's office and, you know, tree board stuff. Letters are just, you know, a test that's submitted to Susan. Should I still be uploading it here?
Do you want it on, on here for everybody to see?
Doesn't matter to me. I, I don't know.
We can make a different file under for H, HC.
Yeah, okay.
And then put them all in there.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just wondering what the, what the protocol is. What should I be uploading?
We would like to to have copies of it, but that's the great thing. You could save it up on there and then send us an email so we know that it, it came in or that we, we know that you received it. Because if you're just putting it up in there, I don't know that you have that. So.
What's the difference between saving it here and sending it to OneDrive?
OneDrive is your personal one that nobody else can see.
Okay.
Unless you're perfectly sure.
Correct. I was going to say, I mean, and I don't know how you guys operate, it may not be the right advice, but if you have things, you don't necessarily need everybody to see right now, but you need to continue working on them and have them stored somewhere. You could store them in your OneDrive. And only you would be able to see them until you put them up in SharePoint. Once you put them in the SharePoint group, everybody will see them.
Right.
Yeah. So OneDrive is your own personal space. You can use that as well. And that's good too. I mean, if you have stuff you're working on, at least if your laptop catches on fire overnight or you lose it, that data is still up in your OneDrive and you can get it back.
And you know, we've been doing this informally already. I mean, we've, we've been working in, in OneDrive collaboratively. You know, and it's like, okay, we'll take a look at this, see what you think of this document. Okay, I'll make my edits to it. And so that's all on OneDrive and then we share the OneDrive document. But you did the same thing, just, okay, we're ready now. It's all good. Let's upload it to ShareDrive and make it an official city document, right?
And at least that way it's clouded the whole time. So if something happens, you still got it. And just to make clear for everybody, what they're talking about is when we click these dots up here and you've got SharePoint, that is like your company file server. You stick it in there, everybody's going to see it. You also have a OneDrive option right here. And if you click that, it's going to open a new window and this is anything you might have in your window. This is the conference room account, so there's nothing there. But if you had files of your own, they'll show right here and then only you can see those. Kind of like a traditional file server. There's always this company shares and then there was always like a user folder you could have for yourself and that's.
Let's say I have a document, I converted to PDF and then I want to put it up on SharePoint. How do I do that?
So it's a great question. So I'll tell you what.
I'm getting ahead of you.
I'm going to say, let me go one step further because, okay, so to answer your question quickly there, the way you would do that, if you had a document you wanted to upload, you'd navigate to the folder in SharePoint you want to be in. And then you just hit upload right here.
Okay.
An upload button. It'll ask you if you want to do a file or an entire folder.
Okay.
And then you hit it and that's going to ask you to browse where that's at on your computer.
Okay.
Both it is that, but.
Okay, very much.
Yeah, inside of that, individual folder.
Yes, like on the root of city council, like in the very first level of that. I'd say, where were we here?
The beginning.
Like here?
Yes.
So they would each have a folder there. Okay.
What is it here wanting us to put in those folders?
Whatever you want to share with anybody, we're going to be putting.
I was going to say, right now, this is, these folders are basically for you to access information that's already there.
That's what I thought.
What we're doing next is now go, what do we want to be able to put ourselves and how does that could be structured? So the question is, do we want to, you know, a Heinz folder and a Hambrich folder and a Brummer folder? Or do we want a, you know, tree board folder and a parts folder and, you know, or, or all of the above? And, you know, since you have a SharePoint, since we all have this, the city council SharePoint, you know, sort of, sort of place to go, we can do it. The problem is, is like, if you look at, if you got behind the, behind the curtain and looked at all the files that are in the, in the city folder after years and years and years and years and years of multiple people from what they have created and placing and moving based on their own file structures and whatever file structures in their head, you know, rather than something else. I mean, I know that Suzanne has been working to try to, okay, we, we need to figure this out. We need to pull this stuff together. So she's the, she's been going in trying to get things organized, but it's not there yet. So that's what we're trying not to do is, is create a lot of that. So think carefully about what you need. Discuss it with staff and say, hey, it would be helpful for me to have these folders here and this is how I intend to use them and then just go to.
You know, one thing that y'all asked for is like ordinances because it's hard to find. We put down ordinances.
Oh, I already dug in there.
Okay, I've already showed everybody. And that, and that's by the years. So let's say I want to look at all the ones that we've done in so far this, or last year, let's look at last year or two thousand twenty one, whichever could be.
Yeah, which last year?
Twenty three. This is twenty one. So these are all the ordinances that were passed in twenty twenty one. So if you know what year it was passed, you can find it relatively easy or you can do the search and and it will search all the documents as well with, with the word. But these are all the documents, these are all the official, they all should be signed and stamped and everything like that.
So we don't get them on whatever that is on the website.
Correct. And these will be updated by city staff. So if a new one was done, it would be on there. But someone, you know, let's say that the first one was done in two thousand and four. That two thousand and four is going to be still on there. Done, it would be on there. But someone, you know, let's say that the first one was done in two thousand and four. That two thousand and four is gonna be still on there.
Right.
But we'll have an updated one for two thousand twenty-three. So you can look at, you know, uh, hot ordinances. Um, I think they're on there back in two thousand and eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. So, so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take all of it and, and if you go on the cities. Web server, server, OneDrive or whatever, if, they're not put in like that. They're kind of all over and we really just have to do a search. But what we've been doing is that we've been, that we find and collect it, cause some of them are in, in one folder and then some of them are in another folder. We're kind of consolidating to one folder. And so this is what we're, so if you see something that, that you would like on there, let us know. And we'll go out and, and research it. But we try to, and, and this, like, uh, financials are on there now, but it's just from when I started. I don't know where the other ones are. Um, so, you know, we have avalanche impacts on a monthly basis as the investment reports. And all of the base statements.
Do we still not have uh Britain's file?
Oh, we do.
Oh, cause you would think the financials are in there.
I'm sure they are.
Oh, okay.
It is not organized. Oh, is, is what are you saying?
Yeah, it's not, it's not organized in a way that I know how to.
Navigate it.
Or that I would navigate it, so.
That's just great. I love it.
Go back to the ordinance again, if you would.
Um.
Just open twenty-three again, or twenty-twenty and then twenty-two and thirty. Yeah. Okay, so should, I mean, does it make any difference? Like I said, you've got the, you've got the word version and then you got a PDF version of the same format. Obviously, the PDF version is safe, but um, but somebody could get into the word version and.
Yeah, we talked about it.
It's okay.
Their name then?
We, we have backups of all of this.
Okay. All right. We gotta do that.
Right. And, and, and what we're, eventually we're gonna have is that there shouldn't, that one shouldn't be on there, so we're gonna actually take that off. But there will be, there'll be like templates for ordinances and for resolutions. So if I wanna do a, a budget ordinance. If, you'll have a template where you just have to kind of put in a couple of words, a couple of numbers, and you'll have your ordinance. You don't have to do all the whereas's and the. All that legal stuff. It's just kind of.
But you could sort of like, like you could sort of the, act uh to the word version. As like comment only or something, right?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of, instead of giving, giving council members full edit rights to a ordinance that's been passed and is on the file. You know, you could, you could comment on it, but not edit it. I mean, that's one of the security things.
Yeah, I mean, you definitely don't need both copies. And if you do that, you're gonna wanna make folders for each one, cause otherwise it gets messy really fast again.
Folders for each.
Meaning like that, if you wanted to have a word version of PDF, then you need this folder and then the word and PDF going that, so.
Once the ordinance is passed, it should just be in there to PDF. You shouldn't have the, the word document.
Cause twenty-two has that shit.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's why they're set up now.
They are, yeah, we're still cleaning. This was kind of, yeah.
So the Adobe ones are all.
Yeah.
Right.
I just wanted to show you that.
Maybe we can get rid of some box in this now, you know?
This is completely unrelated to the.
Oh, it is. Okay, yes.
That, that printer that we get is going to be.
I have twenty-eight thousand documents I have to go through just on the electronic files and that.
It's on the mid-market.
Um, but.
But kind of, you, you see what we did though, that we found that document in the PDF. And so we just kind of.
Linked them.
Linked them up there now to have them to do it. So as we find them, we're, we're moving them over and then once they're coming in there, then we'll clean it off and.
It's a good idea to have the ordinances and, and proclamations and resolutions and things, have a, an actual template.
Correct.
That when you open it, it creates a copy wall automatically and leaves a template on it.
Yeah.
And then you can, you can save that as, okay, well, this is gonna be the, you know, five days resolution, save it and it, and, and. But the template stays behind.
Ninety percent of your resolution, I don't know, depends on the ordinance, but if you have certain ordinances, most of that's all boiled down to like, can we just change a couple of words?
Well, on that point, sending, we circle back to it. Um, the city attorney was very clear and stressed the point. That the warehouses are very important. So I'm wondering about this whole idea of a template.
Well, the template, the template just has the, you know, just placeholders.
Yeah, ninety percent of your ordinary ordinances are cookie ordinance for the, or. Or, let's listen for the investment policy.
We'll have a chat GPT for that.
Yeah.
So basically all that other stuff around the whereas is doesn't ever change, except for like where you reference your exact ordinance. So I have my own template I've been using, having that same perspective. And so I just go in there and delete all this stuff I don't know. Which when I miss something, we've got it before.
But like most, um.
Like the severability and.
Yeah.
Yes, all of that.
That's funny.
And that's one reason we sent it to Roger, just in case we drop a warehouse.
Um, whether, so it goes back to that same old issue of quorum concerns. Clearly us viewing city business and past things is all fine. That's why I was asking about these shared folders and. Like me uploading anything and what are, what are we seeking with that? What is the goal of that? And then how do we get around or? Be safe about accidentally creating quirms? Cause my understanding is really only two of us could be working on anything at once.
If you're working on it, have no more than two people working on it.
But if you put it in that folder, everybody sees it.
Well, also, yeah, that, as well as somebody could eventually like, oh, I got into this file and. Deborah and Bob has already been in there. Oh, but I wanna change this.
That's it. You know, you can, when, if you set up a folder in the SharePoint, you know, you can restrict access to, to just the two people that are working on it.
Okay.
You know, you can, you can, you can change the access whenever you want at a, a file level or a folder level. So if you wanna, if you've got a. You know, chapter eighty-seven that you're working on together, you can have a chapter eighty-seven folder in SharePoint that you're working on together. And because of the access you set, we don't even see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't even show up, but, you know, or if it does, you know, it, it's not accessible.
You can have it in the Heinz folder, but one fifty-four plus and in that only you and Chris could see it.
Well, cause that's why I use my drive already. Certain people have access to certain things and other things they don't. Um, so I was just wondering. Because, you know, we're saying individual folders up here, so what is the goal of that? What are you wanting to see in those folders? What is the?
For our, this is not for us. This is for you. This is for you to access in city information at the ready.
So it's less like us putting stuff into it, it's you guys putting stuff into it and we go look at.
Correct. Correct. So when you wanna look at financials, you wanna look at an ordinance, you don't have to get up any code. You can go here to the file and look at the actual document. Or print out the actual document. That's what, that's what this is designed and set up to be. Now, if you collaborate with one another, that's y'all's, but. For the city and the staff, it's more for you to have information.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, the, the, the thing about like, oh, getting a quorum going, um. It's no different than what we've been doing. It's just that we now have access to SharePoint as well. You know, we weren't doing it in one point. And then ultimately it may find itself, find its way up to SharePoint, you know, when it becomes an official city document.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing's changed in that. I mean, it's, it gives another, another vehicle.
I think the shared reports would be a good addition for talking about things to add. That would be a, like a, a non-officially passed item. That would be good to see the old ones.
Which ones?
The shared report that uh fully.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I didn't see that in here.
Yeah, no.
That would be helpful.
We just got it set up a couple of days ago, two days ago. And so we just, you know, we, we kind of threw some stuff in there that, that we knew, but we are gonna keep. Populating that with information for you.
Recaps.
Recaps.
Oh, yeah.
A J, but, um, yeah, all of that will.
I can put, I can put the recap folder in there. I guess you edit those documents directly, right? So they would be the edited ones that I have there.
Right. So, so like if, if, if we're doing it in SharePoint, there would be a recaps folder. You would create a document in the recaps folder, you know, and it's a, Rasko, check it out, make your edits. I go in and basically my sign off is when I type in, submitted by council member Heinz, approved by Mayor Rasko. Um, and then.
To a PDF and save it in.
Oh, okay. So this is a big question for Casey. So I'm hearing you, but if I upload my folder into SharePoint. And I work on it in my drive, does it automatically change what's going on in SharePoint? No. So it would have to be re-uploaded every single time a document added to it. It's not interlinked.
Yeah, unless you open it out of SharePoint. So you put it in SharePoint, you open the file out of SharePoint, yes, everything you do is ended as you go and you save automatically where's that? But no, if, if you've got one copy in your OneDrive and one copy in SharePoint, they're not linked together versus.
So basically I could work in my drive. When I'm ready to give it to someone else, I put it into SharePoint. And that's where Mayor Rasko would then edit it. And then we would have that collective edited final recap in the right spot.
Yes.
Okay.
And so what we've been doing is linking it from OneDrive and an email. You know, so I get an email that says, hey, take a look, it's a, it's a OneDrive document. It could just, it needs to be a SharePoint document.
And so what I would say is that too, is this thing, so once you put it in SharePoint, then obviously everybody can see it there. So if there are things you just wanna work on with the mayor before it goes live, I would keep it in your OneDrive, share it with the mayor. Out of your OneDrive. And so only the two of you guys can see it. And then when it's ready for SharePoint, then it'll on up. But if you want, just the two of you guys work on something, just share it out of your OneDrive. Directly to him.
But we have a recaps folder. Um, probably what we would do is say, okay, it's cool, it's edited. Um, I convert it to PDF and upload to SharePoint and so, and say, all right. Staff, send it out.
All right, okay. I was gonna dump the recap there now.
This is fun.
But honestly, I'm kind of struggling with. Doing that, Casey. So it's like upload folder and then I'm trying to access. My files. You see, it's like being weird. My drive, it's not, it's not letting me see anything.
Yeah, I can see my.
You can?
Yeah.
Well, no, and that's not even my drive, my drive, much more similar to that. And Google's not the right spot anyway, but.
She doesn't have.
You see what I mean? There's nothing here. So I'll get out a folder and try to do files. Let me get up. There we go. There's a lot more. Now, I don't want my downloads.
I've had a little bit of a struggle.
My computers.
Same thing. I've got, I've got stuff behind me. Where am I?
This is only pulling from the computer. So how do I get? How do I get put in my one?
And so I'll go in.
See, this button is only.
Go bigger. And it accesses OneDrive and it accesses the.
This, right here.
Yeah.
These are all things I've downloaded to be able to send them to other people. So how do I get to drive?
So Kyle, I mean, Ken, for now, uh, yeah, Kyle. Sorry, Ken. Um, so, hey, can we start a few moments? Just keep sending it to you guys. You all upload it or you want me to start uploading it or, I mean.
You tell us. You can, if you want to, just send it to me and I'll.
Okay, okay. Folder, but I mean, right now I've got a few questions you do it.
Just send it to me and I'll.
Okay, yeah.
I think that's the main thing. So however you do it, doesn't matter. If you upload it and send staff a note to say, hey, I uploaded the reports. Perfect. If you, if you email them and say, hey, would you download these in SharePoint, same difference.
Okay.
You know, just whatever you're more comfortable with. And I mean, the goal is this.
Yeah, that's how we are.
So I do have a question.
Some of us are worried about how many. You know what I mean?
There's the different boards. Like it would be interesting to have the minutes, because I know I've had to go dig back into our. Codes and like, where, which meaning was that, you know, it has to be.
Yeah.
Like if we had minutes, like we approved minutes.
So recent, meeting recap.
Well, so what I, what I end up doing is I'll find the agenda or the, the thing that happened, like the motions, and then I go to the next one. To find the minutes.
But that looks like you can actually edit my.
But, but I, but I don't get it. So what happens is if.
Yeah, once you put them in that folder, you probably can get there, right? And then edit on there.
What's on?
So that was what I was just out.
We'll figure out how we will do the minutes and we'll.
No, but I think, I think a recap in my folder.
Once they're signed, they're.
If I make it over here, then everybody can see it.
Kids can give us a bomb or.
And then all of the kids have that up to share.
It'll be.
Cause yeah, at that point, everybody's gonna have access.
So now. And then whatever else.
Or we gotta get more. If you look at the, if you look in your um SharePoint and look at that on the folders at Woodford City Council. Those are basically all meetings. And you go into one of those, one of those meetings, you go into like twenty-three oh two oh eight. You know, it's got all the documentation and their supporting docs, the agenda, the minutes and, and so.
But I'm referring to the boards.
I know. I'm, I'm just saying that, that you could do the same thing with our boards. You know, so it's where you have Woodford City Council, you have Parks and Right, you have P and B. Um, which are there, they just aren't here. So we just need to.
Yeah, if it mirrors what we already have established, then it's.
Yeah, we just have to go in there, uh, upload or.
But then.
I wonder is this, is it a, a, a. It's an upload.
Are y'all now making?
Now.
We've got it, so now, but there's, then you've got two separate sets of the same document, right?
Yes.
You don't want that.
On certain stuff.
So now we're getting another set of files or is it going to be kind of like that?
This is, this, whatever, this is y'all can share whatever y'all want, but also has all of the. Or we have a lot more just junk files that y'all, just that we have to keep. Um, but all of this is gonna be important information, or if you want us to put something on there, we can put whatever on there or. You know, like Brett, he can put his reports on there. You can put whatever reports on there. I mean, this is for you, but it's also. To help you all find ordinances, resolutions, all the stuff that you've been asking for, but hey, we wanna get out there and, and find this easier. This is where it's all gonna be. All the way back to the very beginning that we can find.
I know. I, I'm, why I'm just worried that y'all, we're not creating an, like another file system we're having to maintain, right? This is. Cause that's my worry is if we create too many systems to maintain and it's too much work and this is not gonna function. Versus if this is the system that's being maintained. Then that works for everybody.
That's why I thought of that.
Yeah, no. No, this is not shortcuts. This is city councils folder for all the information.
But that means that it's a duplicate set of files.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what she's saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we have.
Because that, that's making twice the work reel.
No, it's really not.
So say we pass an ordinance tomorrow, right? I know there's not a meeting. You all do your thing, you make your PDF, that goes into some file system that you have.
Mm-hmm.
Does it then also go into some alternate file system that Suzanne has? And then now this third file system.
It goes into the, the, we scan it, she puts it in her binder, cause we also have a paper copy of it. It goes onto the, the internet or to the, the server and then we upload it down here.
So there, okay, so this is.
What we're doing.
And you two aren't keeping your own distinct separate files?
No. I mean, we have our own, uh.
OneDrive.
OneDrive. But we don't have our own thing of whatever. Does that make sense?
It does. And just like, you know, as people have left, and this is not some sort of criticism to them. We have consistently found that everybody's keeping their own files. And then that's how we get to fifty thousand files and it's just repetitive duplicates of the same things over and over.
Yes, and that is what we're trying to get rid of and because uh we also have. Another drive. There that people were using, that's not even on.
That's what she thought of that.
Yes.
Yes. And so, no, we're taking all of those and moving, and, and here's the thing, there's some on our server and then there's some on. That, where, whatever that is of the same thing. So no, we're trying to get rid of all of that. We're trying to.
And if I, and if I could, you know, it's, the more that we're doing things up here in the cloud. Um, the less likely there is to have fifty thousand and one. Um, the less likely there is to have fifty thousand and one files. Because we're on one, we're changing one file. You know, even if, even if it's ten people making changes of that file, it's still one file, it's not ten copies of it. And where we were running the problem is, well, I have to download that, I mean, if it changes, then it might upload another two copies. And then it's downloaded and Heinz changes it, now there's four copies. You know, and that's why, that's why we have the mess we have. If you, if we work within the collaborative system, a change is a change for everybody. And the only time is like, okay, if I want to take it and do my own stuff down here on my hard drive, um, it's not going back up there. You know, it's not going back up there unless what it replaces is removed. You know, we just don't need all, we just don't need. You know, although we can get versions. Just from the, I mean, you can go ahead and get the history of everything that's ever happened on that file, but if it's now in three different places, you don't have that history anymore.
And it will alert you when there are duplicates, and it also, there's, it has an audit log in there as well, so I mean, if something does happen, you're able to go there and see, well, who's messing with this file? I mean, you have some additional benefits there too, when you're talking about having group work on stuff. You can see who's doing what, where you might not see that otherwise. So, there's some additional.
For a lot of people, it's a different way of doing things, this is. It just, you know, takes some good use. Most have it on one place.
I have a general question. If two council members are working on an ordinance or something, just those two. But they just still have it on their OneDrive. Now, the rest of us can't see it, but at some point in time, and let's say I'm curious, I don't want to modify, I'm just curious. That's when they, they put it into the shared file, when it's available for the rest of us.
Correct, whenever they want everybody to see.
Not necessarily though, because it could be, it could be something that's, okay, um, you know, I want, I want. Kevin to take a look at it, um, while it's still on your OneDrive, you can share, when you're working on it with Chris. You and Chris, you and Chris are working on, on something together, and it's like, you know, and I really need Kevin to take a look, you just, you share your OneDrive document.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just grant Kevin access to it, he gets in the, but if you grant.
Brett, then.
Well, this should be for reference purposes of getting to, getting to documents to look at what's happened. Versus more of a collaborative, you need to share your individual file versus everybody's file. So, so what we have up here should be approved, finalized, um, by the RFP. You know, it's gonna be up here, all our, RFPs are gonna be up here, all of that stuff, and so, you know, it's kind of. If I want to look at the past, what has happened, this is where.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I think I might be able to figure out a way, this, this is what happened in my head, which was. It doesn't go there into the shared drive until I've given it to Kevin, or Sudan, like, I've given it to Kevin, Kevin's like, okay, this is the official thing. Then he puts it up, and I think that will be like a control mechanism, so that we're not going, something up in there, I don't want to put something over there.
As a, as a, as a good example, um, you don't know this, but you're not used to seeing it, but if you look at, um, that thing that says apps. And the agenda item uploads, those first two, those first two things, those are actually, um, the result of the. Agenda request forms that you create. When you create the agenda request form, um, and do the uploads of the, of the supporting documents. Those are the folder to go into.
When there remains property, right?
Yeah. So that's where, that's where, you know, when Sudan and Kevin are building the agendas, you know, and they're doing the uploads. Those are the folders that go into the agenda, and that's just the way, we didn't name that, that's what Microsoft, like, Microsoft names it apps. We know.
But I'm just thinking, like, a control mechanism for this system so that we, doesn't get cluttered, because there's lots of people here. Um, in my brain, I'm like, if it's a dumb document. And I feel it's ready to be shared and it's not a core issue, I'm gonna send it to you, I'm not gonna just do it.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think that would. I think since they go, oh, no, I can't put that one there yet, because blah, 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 blah.
I think that's a great idea, we just didn't wanna, yeah, I didn't wanna like put handcuffs on you and said, whatever, cause. But yeah, that would be the ideal one, because if not, there's, there might be a ton of stuff out there.
If you will, this is uncharted territory for us, you know, no council before has had this kind of, you know, even better access.
I like the idea that Chris was saying, you know, run it through staff or let's just don't clutter it up.
Like a gatekeeper.
Yeah.
But it also.
If you get it to me, it's, it's gonna go up there.
Well, that way I'm also viewing the, all this, all these documents differently. Meaning I don't have the access to put stuff there, I'm, it's a viewing location for me.
Do you want us to lock it down, so it's viewing only?
It really should be, like, if you're actually asking the opinion.
Yeah, but, well, well, this will be viewing only, that you can't have anything up there, so when you want it, you know.
I'm sorry, but. Okay, if he wants you to want that as a viewing folder, this stuff, what about y'all's individual stuff, if you want it up there, leave those.
Yeah, I mean, when you talk about ordinances, minutes, resolutions, agendas, those kind of things, those could be locked out.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
They're there, we shouldn't be able to mess with it.
Yeah, I think the whole thing should be view only, we have our own drives, individually work together and share documents, that's the place for that.
But if it's view only, you can't, you can't say, here, Kevin, here it is. You know.
Kevin, Kevin said that view only, he's the only person putting in it, when I send stuff to Kevin, it's, he, like. I can say view only, if he doesn't need to edit it, it can also then be put over there view only, it doesn't. It's just making copies.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Locking down view only, let's see how it goes.
Cause I see this is.
If it gets to be a problem. Then, you know, then, the main thing is, I don't want people, well, I'm gonna just download it and take a look at it, and then, oh, I made this change, you know, that's.
We're both, I'm locking down.
Yeah, yeah, lock it down if it's a problem, because there are various levels of security that you can set, you can set it view only, you can set it comment only. You know, you can do it in comment, but you can't edit it, you can set it to where you can move stuff in. You know, but you can't edit, you know, so, and I don't know, I don't know how Microsoft's security is, but I'm just, I've been trying to Google.
Yeah, we'll try view only, I think that will work out best for a number of different reasons, and then we'll kind of. Like this, this all new, and so we might have to click it and give us a little patience and.
And maybe some folders are locked down tight, and some, you know, have more flexibility.
So, if I was to. Send Kevin an email, and there was something I found in past documents in this location. How do I reference it? Cause usually I would have just grabbed it and put it in email.
You would still do that. You'd say copy link, and you put it in the email, and they can click it.
Yeah.
Yeah, use links, don't upload documents, share links.
Well, now, you could teach me how to do that.
Yeah, it's easy, so when you go to attach it to an email, it's gonna ask if you want to attach the document, or just share a link to it, and that's all, you just click share link, I'll show you.
Also, you can just. Copy the link inside the document, when you hit share, it gives you that, and you say copy link.
Yeah, it's the right.
Is it forum and honor? Is it honor system anyway, I go traditionally?
Oh, you mean the, the, uh.
Yeah, cause I don't know how you're gonna stop that, like, if somebody wants to share a document with three other people out of their OneDrive, I mean, that.
That's, that's, I mean, you can't stop, I mean.
Yeah.
Everybody knows that you can't do.
We've all formed that we would.
It's not the viewing of the document, it's the discussion, you can absolutely share reference materials with everybody on this council. It's then if everybody writes me back and says, I don't like that, or I hate that, or.
When everybody starts collaborating on it, walking one, even though they're not. Um, maybe all in the same room, and so that's what we're going to avoid by just having this view only. And use your, whatever you were doing with the links to work with Chris or whatever, but this is a more of a historical folder for you for reference in use.
You know, if you think about it, as soon as the agenda gets posted, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, number we get it out, um, and we go in and look at it. We're viewing, I mean, the courtroom is viewing the document, the question is, then, no, you can't go up and say, hey, ah, Deborah. Chris, what do you think? Do you think this is her?
Yeah.
You know, that, you know. But the fact that the information's out there is not breaking.
It is an honor system, but it is technically the law, so you can't be.
Yeah, it's a law, and if you, if someone really wants to get in and figure out what you've been doing, they probably can, you know, so, it's not worth it.
We're ready to. Look, Casey, go.
Well, let me show you one more thing, oh, so. So, so for the people that are gonna.
There's more.
Yeah, this might be for the people that are gonna use Windows, um, this is gonna make it a little easier.
Yeah, I'll take a break.
Um, and I think you can take it out of Max, you, I have to load it, I think you can, um, you may already have this thing, uh. So I've showed you how to go to the web browser and click these links and get to these areas, they're just a quicker way if you do it with Windows, and so, what you do is basically come in here. Where you've got your city council chair. You can say sync at any point in time, and what that does is that syncs that whole folder to your computer. Now, it doesn't take up your hard drive space, it doesn't take up any space to you open a file, and then it downloads it locally to your machine. But what that means is now, all you do is open your folders like you always do, inside of Windows. Over here, you're gonna have a little City of Wood Creek data center looking icon, so you'll have your OneDrive, that's your personal space. And then you'll have this City of Wood Creek, if you click that, bam, you're right there at that city council chair. All that stuff we just showed you online is in there. And then you don't have to go to the web browser and log in and do all the stuff, you can just operate out of these folders.
So if I view it, is it being downloaded?
If you open the document, it brings it down to your machine, yes, but, um. But that's okay, I mean, so it keeps you in the cloud, not to take up all your hard drive space until you open it up. Now, even after you've opened it, or you can't go back and tell it later, like, hey, I don't want to come out of life, put it back in the cloud.
Yeah, we're just. How does that work with FOIAs and stuff? So does it matter?
It doesn't matter, honestly.
It won't matter because you're not, you're not able to edit anything.
Right.
So even if you download on your computer and you've had it in a bunch, you're not changing that, it's just you and your computer doing.
It's, it's no different than you saying, hey, send me that ordinance, and I go to the computer and I scan again, and I. And I email it to you.
And if it's gonna be view only, that, that'll be fine, now, my next point to that was, this does make it a lot easier in the sense that you, you can just open up a Word document out of these folders. Same like you do on the web browser, right, you open up a document out of here. You download it, open it up, and then you make a change to it and automatically saves, like, it, it's just like if you did it on the webpage. So like, I come in here and I say, I wanna put an exclamation point on there, boom, it's gonna go save that right now to the cloud, and so.
So it's saving it in the cloud when I'm on my own?
It is now, it's not view only right now, but, but same goes for your OneDrive, if you, we can sync your OneDrive to those folders in your computer, so you don't have to go to a web browser every time. And go through all those different, you know, hoops, you can just go straight to your folder in your computer, open a document, make a change, and close it, and it's done.
I'd like, yeah, cause I.
It's easier.
Would like to move all my documents into one.
Yep, and that's.
Or if you never can do that today, it'd be easier.
Yeah, you can do it real quick. So I'm gonna be changing over.
Oh, you're gonna change, okay.
We got a new one, right?
Right.
Yeah, just, why don't we just find each other, once you get your new computer in your hand, and then all of a sudden, all this stuff will refresh. That is okay to do.
So, if I'm just getting, same, you're setting up essentially a shortcut in your own directory on the hard drive?
Yes, they can be removed anytime, and you can always then link it later, I mean, it doesn't have to be permanent.
See, I never get in a cloud, I just go to my computer, get my, my file button, down there at the bottom of them, and I have my. OneDrive, which is my personal one, and then I have the shared drive.
Yeah, and. If your internet is down, you still have access.
Yes, correct, you just go to office.com, put in your.
You don't. And you don't. Or you.
Your internet is down, no.
I'm sure, but you're.
Yeah, and then it uploads all your changes, and I just turn it touches the internet.
That's right. And keep in mind too, I mean, if, if, I hate to make this overly complicated, but you can use this on your cell phone, you can use it on a tablet. Really anything that has Nap Store, Play Store, any of that, you can get these apps really well, I, like, I use my phone most of the time. Especially if it's just for reference, upload documents, look at them, and then send them, share them, whatever, but, um, you can use it almost anywhere pretty easily. Um, in that regard.
But what I was saying is, if you need a little Casey's personal time, or you wanna set up a one-on-one meeting, then.
Let me make that point real quick too, so the city, the city does not pay additional money for support. So I mean, if you guys need help, just, just open up a ticket, um, matter of fact, if you want to write this down, just email it to support. At. Heart of Texas IT, if I spelled it out, heartofTexasit.com. When you guys can send a support, a support request anytime, we can log in and help you remotely, we can come find you and help you. And the city doesn't pay any additional money for that, so it's not gonna.
But don't you want that to go through staff?
Get used to it.
I mean, I guess they did say that at one point, they was, I personally don't care as long as.
I'll put it this way, if, if something comes in that you need. But if it's okay, yeah, if it's okay.
And the guys are good about asking if they know, like, something's not okay, like, you gotta ask first, I think primarily, and with most customers, we do it that way. So they're employed, and at one point in time, city wasn't all inclusive, so I mean, at one point in time, you know, every phone call's costing money for the city or another client. And so they do, they fund the loads through a management person, but I mean, honestly, as long as you guys don't care.
You have a question, but just give us a call.
And if anything was ever weird, we felt weird about, we would ask, but I mean, I think, but as far as I'm concerned, you guys can open any request you want, we'll help. It's not gonna cost you any extra, so, don't hesitate, get frustrated, whatever.
Yeah, I don't wanna get called at 10 o'clock, cause someone's trying to get in my computer.
Okay, Dave's been on calls since the company opened, so. I haven't changed the phone to you yet. Actually, I think he finally put me on there. Um, is there anything else you guys wanna know while I'm here? And come back any time or help you anytime, but.
I had a question, but it might not be for this.
I know, if you guys are trying to transition into.
On. Let's say on ordinances, is there a search function?
Yeah, so if you're in any of these folders, up at the top, you see, search this library, and that little window at the top, it means my finger, like, you see it? Right here, it means my middle finger. I do that web meeting too, I'm like, it's right there.
They've been deer.
Yeah, so like, uh, like the animal?
Yeah.
So if you do that, yeah, so anything with the word deer, and it's gonna pop up, it's actually got a really good search feature.
Look how often we regulate deer, that's depressing.
The same.
Oh, it's all two thousand nine, but why is it?
Two thousand twenty, twenty.
Oh.
Same thing for the first, probably COVID or four reviews.
It's A, B, but I mean, like, where is all that coming from?
It's probably the same ordinance, but it has beer in each section.
Every time this deer appears, it's gonna pop up.
Yeah.
But why is it B, A, B, no letter?
You've got different versions of the file there, it looks like.
And that's what we're trying to avoid.
And that's nice too, though, cause you can see where the manager was the one that modified it on that date, city secretary was down here, so it's kind of nice, you can kind of see who was working in it last. And if you get.
And that's, that's the, that's the real issue that we have, is that we'll have four versions of one document.
Yeah, there's even more, there's a ton more of the word deer.
And we have to go back to the paper copy to figure out which one is correct.
That's good, it's good you have that paper control.
That is why, you know. Two things, but that's why we have it, just for reference on the really important stuff, I mean.
Well, it's kind of cool too, it, these have just recently been put in SharePoint, but it looks like on here, you can actually see the last real modified date. I mean, that's actually tracking that from the last time it was.
Touched.
Mm-hmm, even prior to SharePoint.
So when we click it, is that date changes to the moment?
I would have. Yeah.
Just opening it will.
I was gonna say, I think I'll change something, yeah, which you won't be able to on those PDFs, but, I'll say that, you might go to comment on one. I don't know, you probably could go in there and make comments or something, but.
Don't.
Yeah. I'm only part of that, I promise you. Uh, and I didn't wanna do that either, so we'll just delete that. So see, you can download these documents, and that probably, I guess that was where you get into a FOI, I think maybe you can bring them down to your machine or something.
No, because. And a lot of this is actually just also posted on our website. Um, but very hard to find, and the whole ordinance is you can't find it all, so that's, to me, the most exciting part of this, is I can look back to nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
And I did get resolutions and proclamations up on the website.
But they're gonna be out here too. Cause the website will still be for residents to look at stuff, but hopefully this is for y'all to make a little.
Question, that's an odd one, so, in ordinances, we know that if there's a new ordinance that touched your old ordinance, like, it replaces it. But the resolutions. I know that actually, when we first started on, we had a policy binder, and had all these resolutions that weren't in effect because of. Another resolution later, took it over, and we're like, well. what, what parts are in effect, what parts aren't? Is there a way to mark them or?
They're by date and by number.
But I'm going to wait to, like, because there's, like, there could be a resolution from nineteen eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
That's still in effect, because, like, nothing's ever changed it. But then there could be a resolution in nineteen eighty-six that got changed four times. How do we know, like, kind of, kind of like, these are the actual live ones, these are under here are just history.
The.
Because the resolution table is numbered.
Yes. If it, if it is norm, normally this is how I do it. If you look at the, uh, investment property resolution that we just passed, okay, that's the first year you did it because you used dollars to do the ordinance. At the very last page, it would be adopted, uh, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And then when we do it next year, say, adopted January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. So as it adopted, let's say it's a, it's a continual or a, or a re changing of the resolution, okay? You would have the first adoption, and then you would have the second time that it got adopted with different language in there. If it was the same ordinance.
That's great information. However, he's talking about something totally different. He's talking about your online file system. Is there a way to see the current, what resolutions are currently in effect, and then how you designate other resolutions that existed previously but are, have been replaced, essentially, is what he's asking.
Yeah, like, these are history resolutions, but these are the things that are live. These are actually live. Because also what happens is when we make a new resolution, it's a whole new number, so it can't, we can't always know that it's referencing something.
Right.
Some of the old ones would reference the one that replaced.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
That's what it should do.
Right.
That's how it's supposed to work, but unfortunately, it hasn't always worked.
Well, I, but I.
And not only here, but number of different places. We will work on it.
Well, no, I like her idea, which is there's just two folders. These are the live resolutions. This is history of resolutions.
We'll work on that.
Just because then I know, oh, I, you know, if I'm looking for something in history that I go there and work on. Yeah. Just an idea.
Okay, now don't expect immediate things. It could be something, I, I'm going to have to look through forty years of files, because something from nineteen eighty-four might still be in effect.
Which is good if we know that from this stuff.
Yeah, we're going to work on putting stuff up here and then we'll go back and clean it up even more, and then we'll go do these little tweaks that.
Well, I really appreciate this because resolutions in particular, when I was a citizen, I tried, like, people would talk about them, and I tried finding them. There's, what's, like, and then even when I got on the council, I was like, so what are these things that I may not know exist, but they do exist? And often it was resolutions, because nobody had them anywhere. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on? We're good. Thanks, Casey. Thank you, Mr. Messi.
So there, I'm going to make your own appointment, so can you get the individual link to, or shortcut?
Not all of us. Only two people operate on those kinds of.
I was going to say, two of them have got Chromebooks. He's going to load his new one and then.
And. I'm going to need help. Yeah, they'd like to switch computers.
You're going to switch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess it's time to do that after this sometime.
Yes, yeah.
We'll be right back on that.
Thank you, Casey.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, goodness.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
I'll just leave that computer on.
Maybe not.
Yeah. We're going to be.
Too quick. All right, well, yeah, I'll sit in until the.
All right, the next quarter of business is the community block grant description. Um, will there be any questions about that? So. Um, and we had someone major at the council meeting.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so what else do we need on, on block or? Um, frame relationship, Steve. Does remember German.
And I'll tell you where some of my questions will be. Um, how should the Platinum Road Committee get involved? Because it's going to involve drainage and roadwork, right?
So.
So I was kind of wondering what the physical elements of that will be.
So the community of the block grant, um, they have their own engineers and their own administrators for the grant. So basically, I could tell you that don't address Deerfield, basically, the whole street, just kind of leave that as alone until we get some of the documents, what they're planning on, because they have a job in that part. They're, they're putting them together now. Okay, before they submit them. Um, but they're going to do it all. So it doesn't become even in our wheelhouse, because we, or that's part of the community development block grant is, we in advance had to show the grants that we have professional engineers and administrators who are going to take over the project and do it. So the city doesn't really get involved out of that.
Stuffing it out.
And basically, yes. So, um.
We'll keep you apprised.
Yeah, they keep us apprised. We're going to keep you apprised. But it's looking more and more like they're going to do Deerfield.
Yeah, so the panel is going to be asked the supervisor.
Yeah.
Or the.
Well, what you just said is my kind of, you know, when we're doing our planning with bond and everything, we're just going to set their fault, their failure to die.
Right.
At this point. Difference.
Yes, there, that, yes. And that which takes it out of, you know, in that way, it's, if we get the grants, the budget that's been given out of the bond and stuff is, will have to be applied to Deerfield. And that during the charade as well. So.
If we don't get the grants, then we.
Then we.
Okay. When will we know about the grant?
I forgot the date in front of me.
I'm just worried about the timeline. Okay.
Really, like, that's why we're rough.
Okay.
It's.
See, I know they're, they're progressing very quickly on, on the screen. So if we do more, we hit the bond or PM.
Yeah.
So we'll know if it's included or not.
I wanted to be able to do the exact date, but I don't remember.
That's okay. I don't need an exact date. That's, that's the problem.
We got, like, links for it.
I mean, the bond versus Deerfield getting the grant.
Right, because we also will know the chip seal, residential chip seal, um, if all of those roads are included. Or if any of those roads are not able to do with the chip seal, then we'll include them in the bond package as well. But hopefully, we're thinking that we won't have to do that. So hopefully, we can remove Deerfield and we can remove the TM, small residential chip seal roads as well.
So. Do you have other questions? That was primarily it. It's just, if you needed the help of the committee, but this is one, and I was pointing to them that um, they will be handling the, the block grant will include implementation.
And it's actually required in order to get the grant, if they've been given it.
Okay.
Like, we're not allowed to have our hands in it, other than we sign the things that they say we need to sign.
Yeah. They've been really good about it.
Oh, they've been excellent.
And holding our hands and getting us through.
Yeah.
And when I get questions, are we going to do low-income housing or something? The housing will actually be unaffected by this grant, correct?
Yeah, correct. No, this is all about.
Okay.
So what it is to, it's a development, community development, and in, in this portion of the grant, it's about making Deerfield for those that are meet our low income or low to moderate income status, improving their neighborhood.
Yes, their existing neighborhood.
Their existing neighborhood.
Okay. But she, but she has a relevant point, because we did pass a bunch of policy statements basically saying that we were going to have fairness in our policies from the city for those mid-length, there was like four or five of them, which is all good practice anyway. But what her question is, that doesn't mean the city's going to start, like, specifically implementing those policies in a proactive way.
We're not spending any of this money towards those, that's it. Is that what you're asking?
I'm not asking. I was letting you know what her question was. Because we passed, like, four or five policy things in order to earn points for this grant. And they, like, one of them is what she said, low in, or low, low to moderate, more housing, right? So. No.
It's already existing there.
That point that I want, and you clarified, but those practices are good practices anyway. Yes, it's not something the city should embrace. My one was about policing as well. Yeah. Fair policing practices, which I believe our county sheriff already has those policies, but it's a good point you brought up. That was a concern I had as well.
So those, going back to resolution folders, those part of the community development block grant resolution, they're going to go in as well.
Log in. All right, the, um, the next one, the Earth Day celebration, um, April twenty-second is Earth Day. Um, I was approached indirectly, um, from, by Apple Texas because they would like to do something, um, around Earth Day. And so they contacted the Water Service Association and said, hey, what can we do in the valley around Earth Day? And Robin said, I think you should focus on Wood Creek for Earth Day. And so I got a call, or I got, um, LinkedIn's up there. Um, I guess, uh, public affairs person, Lauren Sager, and wrote back to, hey, we might be interested in doing something for Earth Day. We don't have anything, we don't have an official event schedule. But, um, but I've been wanting to do a community cleanup anyway, so that would be a, a good thing. So I sent her um, some ideas that would tie into the Aqua part of that. So if they wanted to send a couple of exact down the shovel, you know, you know, then, uh, then, you know, we could have worked. Um, we would have to bring this up, like, at the April meeting, probably to have an official Earth Day event, um, just so we had it on the, on the schedule. But I suggested three things that they might look at. One was the, um, the golf course pond under Cypress Point, because it's a little scummy. And a lot of that scumminess is probably a result of the sewage still from Apple Texas that has gone into the pond. And so maybe a, um, maybe some riparian planting, um, some scrubbing or whatever might be a good, a good place to look. Another one was that they already donated twenty-five hundred dollars to, um, fixing up the, uh, memorial platform, the, um, flag pole. We've already got that check from them. Um, and we never really got around to doing the, you know, the, the big check for a while. Um, but that would be a good time, maybe some plantings or something around that, and a, a picture of them. Also, um, they had already committed first to the water fountain, the triangle. Um, and so maybe something around that, and again, some plants. So I just gave them a few ideas that they might want to work with. And I haven't heard back from her, but that's just for that, was this sort of a report on that? If everybody thinks, you know, that's a good idea, then we can put it on a future agenda.
Um, it was supposed to be a tree board, you have to go to the rest of the about Earth Day. And, uh, you know, I was saying, look, it's coming up on April twenty-second. I don't know much about it. Um, so is there a role for the tree board? I mean, it maybe just, you know, the, the board participates, uh, like, you know?
And that's, I didn't want to, I didn't want to, um, cast it on Parks and Recreation, but it's been pretty busy. Um, tree board is awful busy, but, you know, anybody that wants to have a hand in it, um, would certainly be welcome.
I guess keep me in the loop. I'll reach out to Iris, that, that's on the map, and just let me know, and I'll pass it on to them, and then they can, our next meeting is April ten. Um, so we'd have a little time. We probably couldn't put a lot together, but they may want to participate in some fashion, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see it as, as, you know, a big, you know, a real big deal, even like, like when we put together the, um, neighbor day for the brush pickup. You know, that was just, that's an email that would happen. Hey, we're having neighbor day. Bring your brush down. We'll pick it for you. Um, it's maybe a little bit better organized than that, and, um, and tree board people are, they're really good at that kind of stuff.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll let Iris know and just keep, keep me in the loop.
Yeah, right, thanks. Um, so we also have the, okay, move to item C. We have the, uh, results of the ranking of the pending city business document.
Why is my email in there?
Because.
I know, oh, cop.
I don't know. We don't want teams. Open up the cop.
Sure. You could just go to Survey Monkey and log in.
I got, I got a, I got a follow-up here.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Nice, nicely done.
It's not my. There you go.
See how I did that? They're just, you know.
I was trying to open it earlier, I did. But which one are you?
It says supporting documents.
Supporting documents.
Okay.
Oh, it's a PowerPoint presentation?
It's just one.
Oh, yeah.
One slide. There you go.
Okay, yes.
So this is the result of the city council's ranking of priorities. There are five entries. So so it's a small number. The small number is the best. So social media accounts, this is the average of all of them, which is four. And you can see how each individual council member voted on each issue. So let's take the, the dark blue. The dark blue voted update lot lines and zoning map as number one. They nominated, or they've been posting dark skies and all these signs as number two. Okay, so you can see how each individual, um, voted. Now, like this one, the stop signs. Somebody did think it was very important. Where the others are pretty much there. Okay? Um, example would be, okay, let's take this one, the, it's about five difficult time. Two of them are one and two, very important. But then one did a seven, a four, and a nine. So we have two people that think it's very important and three that are, eh, maybe down the list.
But the aggregate of the five of them is a four.
Well, yes, yes, on the bottom, this is the aggregate.
It's called a weighted.
Yes.
Number.
Yep, the weighted number. So new tree year signs and staff communication, they both came out of seven point six, so did with the RFP. So you can kind of see where it all played out and who voted on what. And so you often discuss.
What kind of, you're looking at all ranking and I'm seeing it kind of through my head.
Yes. The, the rank is now at the bottom.
Yeah, okay.
So four, this is in order, I put this in order please. And that bottom is the aggregate. So, um, you know, the first one is average of four, next one is a four point six.
So like the, the stop sign, then vendor contracts were a tie.
Yeah.
Even though it looks like the numbers are widely skewed, they were both six and.
Correct. Because somebody has it as one, and then three people has it as, had it as a nine versus the stop sign. Um, or the, uh, vendor contracts. Or no, the stop sign, one person, you know, voted as a thirteen, where the rest all had it at five. So.
When was this, um, done?
This was the last, in the last one.
The result for the, yes. Is there any way that we can discuss why we voted?
Sure, because that would be discussed with everyone.
Okay, I'm going to take you along the line on the stop sign. Because.
How did you're coming?
Um, I, I drive this road every day. And the difference, if you put here, I put the two new stops on the two new stop signs in purple. And there's an existing stop sign on Jack Miller. And then to the, where you're going to put the next one, it's a hundred and twenty feet. So this poor house here, they're going to get a stop. You're going to go a hundred and twenty feet in another stop.
I thought the stop sign was going to be on.
And it's already a stop sign.
No, I thought that.
No, it's at, it's at the high-traffic intersection.
It's at the intersection.
Where the pedestrian safety was also identified as a issue.
Here, right. That, that issue needs a little more research. Uh, there has to be one thousand three hundred and twenty feet complete stop sign.
So the new signs are.
So we'll have to do.
Like, not on the Jack Miller stop sign. You could argue that that one might be needed on the stop signs between the end of Augusta.
And that, but not the Jack, the Jack Miller stop sign doesn't count on that.
So what for?
It's on the same road. That's not on the same one.
I have a stop sign here. And a stop sign here. Not here.
No. That she's got the stop signs marked correctly and.
The right thing are where the stop signs are.
Are he exists. The blue ones are the ones that I and council's already voted to add them. They could only put in place. Three months ago.
That's where they were gonna put them?
That's what we all voted on. Well, four people voted on it and it was, no, it's a three way stop at Augusta. Drive and Brook Hollow.
Yes, this is the.
That's Do Little.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing it wrong. There you go.
This is Augusta, but this is going to make, yeah, it's Augusta and Brook Hollow. A very awkward stop there. And probably. I think it's gonna be very unpopular. People are going to stop. On a road that they're used to going on every day. Well, they've already picked up speed by then.
Stop them.
That's well, then we'll speed bumps or speed bumps. People don't want speed bumps. Um also, the stop signs weren't just about controlling speed. The reason why we went with stop signs there in particular is because during the Future Land Use Forum. That was indicated and in other things that our city has done. That area has been indicated as not only extremely dangerous because of the way that the road needs and the visibility, but also because of pedestrian. Mobility in that area. It's one of the most highly trafficked intersections on feet in our entire city. And there's no traffic safety controls there for pedestrians with low visibility entering. And yet, if you live in this area, that. Well, and I do. I really haven't seen pedestrian traffic there. I just think it needs to be studied. I think it will be a very unpopular awkward place to stop traffic.
Well, so to go to the process then, what you would do is you would bring it to an agenda.
Fine.
And because it already has been voted, be all this.
Yeah.
So if you want to change that, you have to change it at council.
Okay.
And in my, in my experience, I've also talked to many people who travel Brook Hollow a lot. And it is very unpopular. To the point of rebellion.
The stop sign or the speed?
And you know, the people that voted for it didn't really live here. Yes, this will be.
I do, I do have a suggestion though, and I I talked to you about it a little while ago, about a month or so ago, called variable speed bumps. That that will slow people down if they're going, it'll be a speed bump if they're going to pass. And if they're going, the speed limit. It'll roll over as if it's smooth.
So that has been something we've also surveyed and has been highly unpopular.
But it's way, it's it's a much better thing to go twenty to twenty-five miles an hour and just roll right over it.
Like a body, just roll right over that person?
Which is flat, it's flat.
No, Bob, I understand, but in all the surveys we've done, people have been like, no speed bumps, no speed bumps, no speed.
But if we must have them, then let's get some that makes sense rather than some that that are the same always, no matter what. Because if it's a speed bump at forty-five, but it's not a speed bump at twenty-five, then it's something that that people can live with.
I believe it was our emergency vehicles that had them removed. Right, well, that was what we were told, that the emergency vehicle people were complaining about then.
No, that's what, that's because there were lumps of asphalt across the road. They weren't, they were literally speed bumps. They weren't speed pillows. They weren't traffic cushions. They weren't stopped. They were lumps of asphalt.
Yeah.
And speed humps, a triple speed hump across a road would be, would deter. Um uh cars, but it would not deter uh emergency vehicles because they can go through them. But with it being a triple, and if we were to have some at each of the entrances to the city, it may slow down our country's traffic. So, so there's a couple of points. You know, one is. We um we've just encountered a huge budget hit um from the winter storm. Um variable speed bumps, just by their description, are going to be many times the cost of a triple hump. Or anything else. And the cheapest, fastest way to. To partially, at least partially solve the problem is to go with the stop sign to the guard area first. But as it will slow people down, they won't also. They won't. But.
They will also direct traffic off to La Roca, off to Brook Meadow. Because this is gonna irritate people who have done this for a hundred years.
Someone almost run over you.
Yeah, I mean, my wife, my wife still suffers from falling on Brook Hollow, escaping car. Dan Gobain um was broken up, falling off the road, trying to avoid a car.
Sydney's Hourby's mother literally was like immobilized for months in the hospital from it.
Yes.
Like not just a broken arm, like broke, broke multiple things.
Yeah, it's, let me say this.
It's a problem.
Well, I agree with you now. I think there there needs to be other ideas as well for for the whole community. And what I would suggest is that maybe we have. You know, either a workshop or what I'd like to see is what how the survey came back, you know, that we just did. But I'm with you. I think there's, there's gotta be more. Uh modern approaches. I mean, I think I'm okay with stop signs, but I think throughout the neighborhood, you need to be looking at stuff like that and try to start budgeting for it, you know? So I'm with you on that, man. Absolutely.
But one of the things is, one of the things is, this this whole, this whole part of the workshop is about priorities. That the council had that, I mean, the council had that, do these things. We've already voted on this stuff. We've already said, do it, and it just hasn't been done. And so I was saying, what are the most important things to get done that haven't been done? And the reckoning's bad to get it done.
Then my vote is, can we just instead of jumping on this, can we concede alternates? Can we see what the people on Brook Hollow are saying?
All this is what we thought priority.
Yes.
Everybody that voted.
Right.
You know, so so, you know, we said that this is a priority to get it done. We can say now, yeah, let's take a breath. Um and work on the other things, you know, but but some of this stuff is gonna be impacted by the service. Um and they're sitting in a pot. We're, we're gonna get that information quickly. If we do some of like, that the second one there, excuse me, that's all the five digital solar power.
Yes.
Uh radar site. That alone, if we do one on the southbound side, Brook Hollow, as it's approaching Augusta Drive. Will slow down that traffic.
They already have locations that there are the entrances.
Yeah, I don't see that much. Look, let me finish first. Uh I think you're, you're right, Bob. I did. I I think this is a solution that I supported to begin with. Uh and I think going further with additional solutions, I think you're right. I really do. But that's gonna have to be either a separate workshop. Or a separate agenda item. And I I support an agenda item on that. And you start having serious talk about what the next step is, you know?
So to give context or background, I guess, is when council had these discussions on these different speeding issues is. It was a, let's approach from multiple points of view. This is one element. This is one element we can do then. And then, you know, we're gonna keep having this.
And I just wanna pause. Specifically, this stop sign and its location is less about speeding. As it is traffic control for safety for pedestrians in particular, and the visibility at that intersection. And the fact that you do have another intersection so close to it, that you have multiple traffic patterns all convening into one area. A stop sign is a natural method for that kind of control. You're right to talk about speeding should maybe be controlled in other ways. That this stop sign wasn't primarily about speeding at all. It was about that this was, like I said, a high pedestrian traffic zone with low visibility. Could a crosswalk. Alert people that they're crossing without coming to the. They're not crossing, they're walking along the sides of the road. You know what I mean? So it's like. There's, there's human beings walking and the visibility is hard on that turn to see to the right. On the left, people are coming up a hill, the cars are coming up a hill. Yeah, I've got pictures of it. Um here's this. Right, so there's a sign on on Jack Miller. You can see right there, a hundred and twenty feet where the other one will go. Here's the existing sign and the other new sign would go here. It's. I just think there may be a better, a better solutions. For instead of that, that double stop, we pull people on coming off of Pebble Grove. Um, I do, I do, I mean. They've gotta stop here. This house is gonna have all that stop and go, and then they can turn right here, stop and go. Um, that happens out of my mouth. I turn right and I stop at a stop sign immediately and then I go on. I mean, I'm over on Wood Creek Drive where another three way stop exists for pop pro lane only. Everybody here still goes and. It's different than having two stop signs within a hundred and twenty feet.
So he said, he said, not only do people come out of Jack Miller do worry about, they don't have like two stops?
No, they um, no, they're like, well, yeah, that's one of them.
Okay.
But um, cause, cause that is short distance and also that house.
That's. Yeah, I remember.
Yeah. Well, I forgot to do it though. Uh these stop signs could have been installed five months ago. That's the, you know, yeah, I should have, if.
But Kevin's gonna do some D O T research to make sure we're cool with that, right?
Okay.
So the other thing to remember is that, you know, some of this discussion was, they said, there's a lot of stuff that we wanna do. But, you know, Platinum Roads is looking at fixing up a lot of roads, um including traffic calming as part of the.
Yeah.
Part of the fix it.
Is that part of your scope?
Brook Hollow was already done and Brook Hollow is not in button panel scope.
Okay.
So for for traffic calming, so and traffic calming on Brook Hollow is a necessity.
Yeah.
You know, we, we gotta do something about that. But we're saying, well, we're doing all this, we're moving, you know, combined, you know? So, but it, same thing with what with.
Group, I mean, my God, yeah. I mean, it helps several law enforcement, but you know, you almost need another every day.
Talk to them. They want traffic calming. The speed cushion that worked on uh Wood Creek. And there are cement type traffic slow devices. That will work for um for Brook Hollow. It's just an alternative to think about and then. Uh and also research is this illegal place.
If we can, if we can find a better way, then we.
That's all.
We find a better way.
Well, I'm sure we're gonna go back to the fact that council has already noted this particular thing. Now, council can undo that, but it has to go through that formal system. So currently, what we have right from this is, these things are. Council approved.
Yeah.
And this is the order in which council wishes and. Uh wishes staff to address them.
Yeah, I I wouldn't support them doing it. I mean, I I think, uh, I don't see that as being, I mean, it can be, I mean, or more convenient for that and.
And this is what, again, not traffic calming as much as it is, is traffic control.
Right.
Two different things. So you can't use traffic calming to control traffic. Not the same.
Right.
That we've got three things on the priority list. They're gonna take some time and effort. You know, so if we wanna, if we wanna take a breath on item number four, that we wanna take a breath in those stop signs. And come up with a better plan, I'm, I'm okay with that. Um what we were trying to do here is that here's, here's the list of the things that we've asked staff to do. And what do we think are the most important, so they can help, they can prioritize them and and, you know, take up some bites of that element.
I'd rather switch again and let Kevin keep working on it, man.
Yeah, I think we should just go with the survey of the order of things to do.
I mean, let's start from the beginning. Social media accounts for Facebook and Nextdoor is a people day activity. Um to happen, right? Just a separate city account on both of those. That's not gonna cost any money other than staff time. The five digital solar power signs, that's gonna cost money. We haven't budgeted for them, so we need to talk about where that money's gonna come from. Or, you know, the city manager's gonna have to make that call for us, right? Figure that out. And maybe present it with his amendment. So that's a little bit more in depth. Then we have to purchase those signs and have them installed. So that, I mean, we're, the next item on our agenda is giving reports on this stuff. So maybe we let him give reports. On where we're at on these things, so we know. You know what I mean? Cause if there's something legitimately holding up number two or three, then that makes sense to move down the line onto the next item. While you wait, you know?
I totally agree. Yes, cause this kinda gives us a direction of, okay, where do we need a. Rather than looking at fifteen things and us deciding where your priorities are, this kinda gives us an idea, okay, where do we need to focus on? And like you said, some things will take longer than others, some are quite easy. But it just gives us a little bit more information from where you're stood in, in your priorities. And then, as you also said, the, the pending business, that will be a living document that we will continue to update. And add to and take off as we go through the next couple of years.
Will that be in the research, uh, sharepoint?
Yes, yeah. And it will probably be updated on a monthly basis. And so it'd probably be on the manager report, just in there for you to look at. Um I don't know, but we need to discuss it every. Uh week, but it might be every three months, four months. Maybe have a short discussion, uh, okay, do we need to move anything around? Or are we good set with the priorities of what we're working on? Or do we need to move some up in the priority, priority? Cause some stuff is down there and I I really haven't read the, the pending business, other than what was in progress and was not. But if something that, hey, this down here hasn't been started, we really need to start it, then we can move it up in pending.
Well, like, for instance, we could get to a certain point where the annual citywide broad sale, the deadline is looming and we haven't focused on it. Correct. That might be something, hey, we need to pull this forward because now we're at this point, we have an official deadline to it, so.
Correct.
I just made a copy of that document, uh, because it's, it's my own thing that I do. So if you wanna take that document and change it. Uh you can and you have, you saw access to that, but I'm labeling mine as mine, so that we're, I, I know we talked about, we don't want multiple versions, but. I like to have, it's my own thing for my own use, that I've only just shared as like a courtesy assistance thing, you know?
You're talking about this one?
The, no, the pending business that you were just talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no question.
I just like, if you wanna get in there and reformat it and put in a bunch of your, you know, do your style or whatever, then you absolutely can. And it won't stop you. I just rename, I, I made myself a copy and put my name on it. Uh and so if you do end up using it, you're good to go to do whatever you want. So did you wanna?
We ready to move on to the next? You wanna show, give me bring up yours or mine or?
Whatever you wanna do, boss. Boss.
Oh, boss. You have, uh, there's two documents in there, in, in your, in your binder. Um Deborah has one that lists not only staff, but also many numbers, if I'm correct.
Also, so y'all know this agenda, the links aren't working again. Like the, if you go to click on the, the highlighted letter number. Uh it's giving that same error message it did before. It doesn't link. Up. So you have to scroll through it. To get to wherever you're going. I don't know what's wrong with it, but.
We could hasn't finished fixing that for. When they do, I'll let you know.
Which one, what pending business?
Yeah, pending business. Oh, I, I took Deborah's.
Yeah, that's so funny, cause I had it like this at one point and then I made it a document. Yeah, that's so funny, cause I had it like this at one point, and then I made it a document.
I had, uh, so I just kinda took what she had, and I just did, I, I put what we were working on, kind of estimated date. And where we are with what we're doing. So citizen survey, um, was on the list, it'll be done. Tomorrow, um, Facebook, Nextdoor accounts, I just have, they, you know, we'll get that done first, just because of the last agenda item. City Bradford sale, book pickup that has basically already been, um, set, and those are the two dates. The Bond Road RFP, it's in process, and we should have it by nine thirty, but Soscape is working on it. Harvey on there, so you can kinda see what we're actually working on now.
Did the Parks Board take up the garage sale?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
They passed that. Yeah.
We missed the report on that. You reported that the Parks Board decided to take up the garage sale, citywide garage sale?
Cause what they, if I remember correctly, what they did was, yes, we'd like to do that, but we'll do it later. Like, they had discussion about it, we'll talk more about it, but we'll talk.
So they actually took up the event?
But they also. Because spectacular was what they were about to say about. Drive, sorry.
That's really, this is y'all's discussion.
So I did go down just for fun and, and looked at the chart of the priorities. And numbered, uh, you know, where they fall on here. This is basically by day. And it might be interesting to put a column in that just sort of, sort of where the priority was, you know, just sort of, sort of that way. Um, some of them, some of these that, you know, pending city business we all work on, weren't in the list of priorities anyway. You know, so it's not, it's not a perfect model.
You want me to put the priorities on here?
Yeah. I couldn't find. Couldn't find them that, here, the sign and garage sale, sign permit days. So, oh, here it is down here, it's sort of, yeah, completed, so. So that's nothing. And these are your notes?
Yes.
So the Masonary stuff in the Board of Adjustments was submitted to MuniCo, right, you already have? Um, we had directed Bud to do an overhaul of the Board of Adjustment Code. And I'm guessing he never submitted anything to anyone, okay. I figured as such, um. We would have to redirect it to Roger, just because Bud's contract terminated all of that stuff. Uh, it definitely is extremely out of date and really bad, like, because I've since read it myself and been like, woolly, woolly. Um, so yeah, it is something that. Somebody needs to do. Like either put on an agenda or something, I don't know. I mean. It's been brought up into alignment with state code, for the most part, at least the section that we were aware of. But it references like a non-existent chapter.
Cause ordinance review is also working at that section.
No.
No? All right.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean they aren't.
Should be, okay, do we get to move this on to? He, or is that mayor's job?
Come on.
No, 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 I, I mean, I think we're all just, I mean, are you, are we done talking about this? I was still kind of processing the information personally.
Okay.
Like. What is this stonehouse circle sign style selection not related to staff?
Oh, the safety stuff, uh, safe driving, the dark skies, it's written right under it.
Yeah, but we, in, in that discussion passed.
The packet, yeah.
Well, yeah, there were samples and we said which ones to do.
Yeah.
So they're in the packet?
Uh, yeah, and then you'll probably have to go maybe listen to the minutes, because it was talked about. Yeah.
Was there any pictures, or was it just?
Yeah, there's pictures.
Were there actual pictures in the packet that means that are already made up and developed, or do we have to go to a?
One of them is, so Pat Rawlings created two of them himself, the dark skies and the safe driving, so he has.
I have the dark skies.
And he, he created the safe driving as well, and then the safety of neighborhood is patrolled. We just said, find, there's a picture, we said, find what you, is available that mirrors that.
Cause it's a very generic.
Yeah, sign.
Official sign.
Uh, I couldn't find the exact one, because it belongs to a neighborhood, so we couldn't even do that anyway, cause it says this neighborhood is patrolled. We would want, I mean, I guess you could say this neighborhood, that's fine, but.
So we're workshop in here, can I throw a sign idea out? That, I don't know, but, but, you know, that's sort of like. Something along the lines of, you know, no street parking, all four wheels off the pavement, little pictures of. Tires on grass or whatever over here, something like that, um, towing forced.
The problem with, with all those kinds of signs is, that means that you're gonna get twenty of them. I, you know, I, I know what you're saying, it's.
Is people, you know, parking, you know, it's like, if you live here, you know, except if you're a visitor, you don't.
Right.
And so far it's been up to individual residents to tell people who are visiting them to get their car. Yeah, and, and my wife has some, some friends over today, and I know two of them live in the city. And they're parked all four wheels on the, yeah, and I'm like, hey, baby, I don't wanna have to rush a ticket, cause I will.
Maybe that's a good just reminder communication that goes out periodically.
The graphic in my head is good, but the, the question I have is, is can we enforce tone, can we tell?
Yes, because they're parked in the middle of the street, it's called an obstruction of a, uh, whatever, they're there, and it, it's a, a misdemeanor thing. It's not something the sheriff can enforce.
And we do have a, um, when you drive from twelve on to Brook Meadow, there is a. Truck limit sign and towing enforced sign there, right as you enter into Brook Meadow.
Oh, on the, on the east side, coming in.
Coming in from twelve there.
Honestly, I think it's a good idea, the, those kind of signs, having that stuff up gives you added enforceability, right? Because you've clearly marked it in public view, so if you do tell somebody, you said, there's a sign at the entrance of the neighborhood. Just like with the towing things, that sign can be this big and hidden in a corner, but if it's there and they tow you.
If it's on the same, on the same coast as all the others, then, then it doesn't take extra room space.
Yeah.
We did, I did actually bring this item before council. And it was, it was kind of whittled down, but we were talking about, and it was part of a stop sign. Was as well as parking force and. So this is what we ended up with so far.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean we have to visit.
Right, and, well, these are, these, these are, these are, like, you know, we got our tree city USA sign.
Yeah.
You know, so we've got those, we don't need ordinance to put those up, we're gonna promote them, right? Cause they're, you know, we've got the designation, we've got good places to put them, you know, we're gonna do it, but, but those are, those are descriptive signs. That's like dark skies is a descriptive sign, you know, you know. Be careful, that's a, that's a, but this is, we have a, we have an ordinance about that, that sign, an ordinance sign kinda stand alone.
So these kind of signs don't actually need counsel, this is a city manager per, per view item. And he could order them at your direction, and they could be inside off, installed. Yes, no, 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 um, your parking signs, parking off the street is actually a city manager. Item, uh, that I don't think you would need council approval, just like we didn't have to approve the yield signs on all the golf cart paths.
Just the, just the.
Yeah, and it, the expenditure is basically a budgeted item under what, like, we have road improvements probably, I mean. I guess you could request the budget for them.
I'll have to look and. See, but yeah, there should be.
Maintenance.
Yeah, well.
Because this is just designed to enforce existing code.
Yeah, I think one thing that I have heard in the past with putting up signs is that, um. Nobody wants the sign in their yard.
True that.
And so, that is why I think some of these signs have not been put up to date.
But it's not in their yard, it's in our.
Correct, it is in our easement, and as long as, I mean, because they, they may come to council, they may come to you, so. Uh, before I did anything on that, I wanted to let you all know. That, you know, if, if it is a staff direction and we put it in, in, uh, city right of way. Um, maybe some people may get angry, cause it was in front of their house in the right of way, so. My question is to you, you know, the US council want to vote on those locations? Or do you want staff to pick those locations out if it is a staff?
I'll give you, I'll give you a good example from personal experience, so I had, I had a citizen say, hey. Um, that's not a champion circle, you know, we'd really like to have some danger, you know, curb. You know, signs, place, and I said, yeah, that's a good idea, just like there are here, you know, just like there are. This is a champions, where there's a blind curb.
That's right.
A blind curb down there, so, so we went and we marked the places and, um, and. One neighbor got, got in shape, the other neighbor says, well, you know, you did move it away from my metal house, I'd be okay with that. Um, but, as it turns out, if you come this way a few feet and go that way a few feet. You're either on golf course area, um, or sort of a undeveloped area, but it's. A little farther away from the curb, and so Brent said, well, you can't do that too far away from the curb. You know, so, yes, you can, you know, so I don't, I don't see what, I mean, is there some rule about that, or is it just? You know, if you have a sign up, then the neighbor that wants the sign is gonna be happy. The people who don't want it in the yard are gonna be okay, so put the sign up, right? So, so there are places that you can go and put some of these signs that are gonna be. What, not stop sign, of course, but it's kind of these signs, like, I, I will grant the city permission to put any sign, including. Especially including radar sign in, on my property on the Giza Drive. To, to capture any, anything coming to or from LaRocca Drive, LaRocca Lane.
Well, all this goes back to communication, right? Clearly, and often communicating to citizens that they don't actually own the team feet at the front of their property is relevant, right? To get that, to remind them that the improvements you do here are not guaranteed. And that things might be installed in these areas at times. And of course, we're going to communicate kindly and appropriately with you, but reminding people of these things is good. So that expectation is already set. Uh, with the curb thing, there is, there are rules about the distance to the thing that you're noticing. But whether or not what Brenton went out and measured is what he communicated, I don't know. But, for example, with the parking off the street, you could easily attach those to the new radar signs. The new radar signs were already given locations, and the direction was that they should be placed. The appropriate number of feet from the intersection based on research on where that. Distance is to gaining full speed, and that was the direction given to staff, meaning we didn't say put here on a map. Right, but that they should be at the entrance at the appropriate distance for gaining our speed. Right, because they don't do us any good at right at the turn.
I just wanna make sure that, that when it comes up, that y'all have, you know, y'all know what may come up.
What, what signs are, other than the dark sky and all that, what?
The curb.
Okay, curb, then what is the sign? Parking?
Yeah, I don't know, I, I'm more specifically about the, the curb sign, what I've heard.
What sign are you talking about, I mean?
Three down on Champion Circle. The curb, yeah, done at the very, uh, done.
You need three on there, geez.
That's what was approved.
Three wasn't.
Curbsigns.
That's never gone to council, that's just basic, again, some of these things don't have to go to council, because they're standard.
What I'm trying to find is, what are we talking about, I mean, if we're talking about fifty signs from the neighborhood?
No, it's not fifty.
Oh, how many are we talking about?
I haven't taken an, in the theory of that, I'm just, I know we have three curbsigns, what I was told.
Somebody purchased them, but they weren't, there weren't three.
Let me, and, and this is some of, uh, maybe the confusion, if we can kinda, let me get a list.
Yeah.
And, and if we can sit down and say, okay, this is what I have, is this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to create what this.
I remember the third curb.
The same thing with.
Top of the Gator Drive.
The four radar signs, that was, you know, we have two different versions. One is that we're gonna buy with grant money, when the grant money ran out, or we didn't get the grant money, they only approved two. And so, you know, there's some. That is, and so I don't know.
Grant approved two of them?
No.
The, the five were the grants before, we didn't get the grant, so council approved two of the radar signs.
No, they approved all, all of them.
Yeah.
They approved all of them, the grant didn't even come up till after approval, and it was applied as, oh man, maybe we could get money for some of these.
Okay, I'm just saying what different people, council people.
No, what I said, what I said was that for budget purposes, if we have to put the brakes on. A couple, because we didn't get the grant, then we need to do that, or we need to find money to do it.
Well, I, I'd really like to make one comment to this relevant to grant management. What I'm hearing is people go, we have a quiet little community, we don't want a bunch of clutter with signs. So it would be good to have an idea of where they're going to be, are they going to be aesthetic? Are they gonna be a standard sign, um, just so that it doesn't change the character of the community.
I think this is what you were saying, is you're gonna give us an idea of what, how many signs we're talking about and whatnot, yeah, just, it was just a few, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and just to, you were careful when we had these previous discussions, she was, that exactly was the discussion. But how many signs we're gonna have, how effective it is once you have all those many signs? And you had a reference earlier about how many, you know, if you have too many signs, you don't actually see any of them.
Well, I think a good ideal is to have a, a map of the city with all the signs or the type of site.
And what you're.
In the city, at what location, that way when you're talking about stop signs, you'll sign curbsigns. No parking sign, you can look at the map and say, okay, there is our no parking sign here, 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 or whatever, so.
And what do they matter on what sign together?
Yeah, right.
Some of that's already in the, just so you know.
Right, yes, but we need to have a list and a physical document.
And it could just be in a report.
Yeah.
And then we can discuss it.
Exactly.
So the, the dark skies, safe driving and all that is just one pole, one sign, and it's at the. No, it's at the island. Near the triangle, there's an empty pole.
That's, that's, well, we were thinking about putting a, remounting a, a radar sign there, but have the other side below.
That's fine, the, the only sign that can't have anything on them are stop signs, and I believe your speed sign is also supposed to be unencumbered. Um, the rest of the signs, if it was pertinent to the thing they're controlling, they can have more on them. Like dangerous curve ahead, you'll often see what the curb looks like, but you can't like put another sign under that, that's like. Look out for your dogs, poof, you know?
No, if you're gonna, gonna map out, or is it traffic, then we can't have it.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, like I said, it is, cause I don't have institutional knowledge, and so it's good to.
Me, me or council member could work with you on this stuff.
Yes.
I've also started reading some of.
I've also started reading some of this, like your, the stop signs that y'all want get um adjusted and. For follow, there has to be a warning sign that there's a stop sign coming out, so it's not just one.
I don't know, municipal street under thirty thousand people.
We don't have warning signs anywhere else.
Right, I don't.
I think it's a, it's a speed. We'll, we'll look at all of that, yes, well, let me work with you or, or.
I'm just.
Whoever, whoever you, you want. Yes, I'll, I'll need some help, I'll do. The inventory of the signs or their thing and then get with. Somebody that has an institution, like, okay, I'll get with you and, and we'll work on these.
We lost our segment.
Uh, before we go on to the, from the pin business. One thing that I was very interested in and we didn't talk about is um what is it, the flag. New maps.
Oh, the, the new zoning and.
Zoning.
These guys.
These guys, we, we, we've been working with them, there is um. There's a discrepancy with.
Last, we were told was um.
Yeah.
You didn't get a quote yet.
Now, they're right here.
At the bottom.
No, it's in the, right here, our ETJ. Over here. They have the ETJ going in the middle of these people's yard, and that's not correct. It needs to go along the road. And so they are researching that. Because when these are made, these are correct, so that's kind of where we're at, waiting on those.
So they've got up to Wimberly, Wimberly's ETJ.
Do what?
They've got up to Wimberly ETJ down there.
Correct, this road is.
It is.
Yes, LaToya.
But it doesn't follow the road and then it splits people's yards and then it goes back and then back down.
No, it follows the road here.
Well, I'm just saying, we've got it.
Yes, yeah, that is, that is the problem. Because we, we incorporated first, so our ETJ is prominent and then. Uh, Wimberly's, like theirs is not round. There follows our curvature because we have our ETJ. But this is the, this is what we're working on right down here in this area to make it correct.
So.
That's kind of all we.
On that item, council is actually supposed to be given the budget for it first. So maybe that doesn't matter now, but.
Well, yeah, well, if you.
Because, well, and I, I just gotta be honest. Um, it's best it just moves forward because they're out of date and that's regular city business, so I'm not really sure it matters. That we have the budget first, that makes sense.
It's regularly business now.
Right, so.
I don't think mapping would have to go through council. I can give you the, the numbers. We'll find out, but, I mean, it has been out there, I think, ever since I've been here.
So these were done, like, basically for free, is what we were told before.
That's why the gradient.
Oh, the old ones, ah, that's, that's probably why there's some issues.
Like that one, they were, they said it was free because see how the green takes the yellow?
Yeah.
That was a runoff. And they ran out of ink, so they just gave us that copy because.
Okay.
So that's what they meant by, these were free.
No, it was also done for free.
Oh, done for free?
Yes, a free.
We're, we're trying to make it right, and so that's why. Yes, so that's why we're having a little delay in that, but it is. Long answer to a very short question.
But will they also be, is this just primary going to deal with the ETJ boundaries? Or will be, will there be a revision to our internal map of plaques?
Yeah.
This one, this one, any zoning updates, anything like that?
Yeah, it will have all the zoning, whatever, whatever is current will be on here and then it will.
Also lots of.
There's like three or. Okay, three or four maps that they're actually redoing.
Okay, yeah, so what if it fix all of that?
Yes, it's gonna fix all our maps.
Because the county has estimations, they have digital maps, but they're. They're not something you can actually use in road planning or.
Correct.
These are all the zones that weren't on there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of. Revisions. To that, so, yes.
Good, because we need relevant maps that actually are accurate to make decisions.
Well, I had to research the ordinances to figure out what was missing, so that's the number of the map guy.
So that's what we're looking for.
You mean all those business districts are supposed to have?
Yeah.
Business district, the whole.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You can have a dentist office. In anywhere in the city.
Yes.
Not kidding, mom, breathe the code.
She's gay.
No, it's not, it's not enough. Because then all your family, they're working.
Oh. Yeah, actually. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Swear, it says.
All right, can we move? I don't need to discuss on this operation of the red box. Means outside of item voted into approval.
Yeah, okay, so this, this was something I submitted, so I'll just kind of take it up, um. There's a couple reasons why I put this on here, one, because I just wanted to have just a general discussion, so we're all on the same page and have the same understanding of how. This stuff should work in our collective opinion. Part of the drive of this item has to do with the fact that we do have these chapters coming from an ad hoc work group. Into council and then they're gonna be traveling around to different people. And so I just wanted, like, a real clear understanding of, like. What is the policy on this kind of thing and when can drafts be changed? Um, the other part of this is, um, recently, the ordinance review committee was working on a document. And they kept meeting and basically making decisions and voting on their decisions after they came out of workshop. But then the last document that was presented to them as a group. Had significant variations from what they had discussed in their last meeting and voted on.
From capital?
No, but in their own group. In their own group, right? So notes were kept, they had like this live edited document, and then another document was presented at the very end. That left off no less than six items that were previously on it. And had, and they weren't in the minutes. And I happened to be listening in part of the meeting, so I was pretty aware of like what all had happened and not happened. And there was no, like, significant conflict there with that. But I, it did raise some concerns for me about drafts being edited outside of meetings. Once there are votes happening on drafts. And just.
Okay, but just, I just have to be clear. So these, these are. A document is drafted by a committee. Um, and then somebody on the committee takes it and does a bunch of stuff over here. Without input from their fellow members and then. It's submitted as.
That happened, yes. But the other. And they, they voted forward with it and I didn't highlight all the differences. Because it wasn't my role to do that as liaison, but I, I visibly noticed it and it was concerning to me. What I'm most concerned about, though, is moving forward, I'm working on these massive drafts of these big things. How do we protect the integrity of our drafts? Our collective decisions as they move forward, right? Um, so like, for example, like the, the tree ordinance was a really big one, right, that bounced around. But there was clear documentation of what exact changes were requested and then made between each bounce. And so to me, that should be standard policy for us. That essentially, a document should not receive any, once it's presented. Into an official opening meeting, right, open meeting, there not, should never be any additional changes. Made to it that were not discussed and approved of in the meeting.
And then those changes get implemented, brought back to the body the next.
Yeah, and, and documented.
And it's a voting, you know? On that same topic, on just kind of a slight skew is. I also am curious about motions from committees. And how they have to be carried over exactly as they were voted. Sorry. I get lots of scam calls. And I know that. Long time before you all appear, there was points where. A, a committee would make a motion and pass the motion. And then when it got transferred over to council, like sent something to council, it would change in the air. When it landed on the agenda. And I. You know, I think that's, I don't like that lack.
Well, that's, that's either the liaison or the city manager at the time. You know, taking that information and adjusting it, you know, for the, for the council agenda. Um, which it's a new.
Yeah, I mean, the, the change can happen at council. But they, it's the recommendation, it is the recommendation.
No, that's, I mean, the, the council can, can vote against the motion or amend the motion or do anything they want. But the transmission of the information should stay pretty much intact unless it's just a.
And that's what I wondered, that's like, I have this question, because I came up with this concept, and I'm sorry to take over, but it is.
Completely different.
Um, like, because I, there's a, there's a certain gravity to motions that we all have to work with. And I always thought about this, like this type of this goofy hypothetical, which is. If council voted to, and this is the goofy hypothetical. That each person should have a pro in the city. But the discussion of pro.
Like a verb, yeah.
Yes.
But the discussion during.
Your ass order.
What about Peppers and Paul Steens and Angus? So obviously, somebody misspoke, but that's what they passed. To me, the fact that they made this, but the motion takes precedence versus the intent. Correct?
That's what we ran into with the citizen survey, because I used the word consider, we had to bring the whole friggin' item back up.
Yeah.
Um, because of that, even though our intent was clear, so yeah, the motions are, the integrity of the motions is important. The integrity of the documents as voted is important.
Can we go back to that?
No, because that's the same concept to me.
More or less, but my concern is, is like. I don't know what's gonna happen with these ad hoc chapters, right, one fifty-four plus. Basically, it's like a baby we're birthing into the world and then council's gonna get it and. Will decide to send it places, and so once we start doing that, we need to have a policy in place for. How changes are documented and made or requested or, you know. That, you know, some sort of plan there, go ahead.
So, so going back to that, and then sort of flashing back to our um IT discussions. And having, you know, documents in place and security lockdown and. And you know what, this is the document, and these are the. Four people that have access to it, the city secretary, the city manager, the liaison. And the chair, or the chair and the co-chair, whoever, whoever those are that are responsible for that document and making those changes. And putting the red lines in and making sure you track those changes, or one document. You know, that goes through an editing process. And then when it's ready, it goes to SharePoint, whatever that is, or, you know, council agenda. Same thing with a, with a motion, if a, if a motion is made, it's in the minutes of the, of the city body. Um, and, and that's how, how it comes to council, now a lot of times, you know, the, the body just says. Well, I move it, be sent to council, you know, and so that's the motion. You know, there's no, there's no caveat there, it, whatever it was, is sent to council, that's how it comes. And then, and then council deals with it, but it shouldn't go through, I mean, if it's, if it's going through changes, if somebody is, is arbitrarily. Changing because they don't like the wording, then they can't do that, no, that's not. That's not a good thing, and whether it's, or their staff, or whether it's one of us, it's not, it's not good. Um, and it needs to be called out, but, um, but basically, if we're working, if we're working like we've talked about. Collaboratively on these documents and on these motions. And, and all of this information is easily accessible to us and ultimately through the chairs and vice chair. You know, of the committees, I mean, they, they should be able to get it and look at it when it, and if it's just like, we look at our ours, nothing wrong with that. Um, the difference is just the. You know, work with Casey on the, on the access, because we're all, we're all, we all access these documents from our domain. We, we all access them from wood creek TX dot org, we're part of that domain, there's a lot more security, you could point it down on that. Um, you know, Iris doesn't have a wood creek TX dot org or dot gov account. So, so we would have to work with Casey to make sure that, you know, they have the proper access and, and be managed, but. I, 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 I see that as a, as a pretty solvable problem. You know, both the, both the motions and the, and the docs, it's just, it's just, we need to do a better job controlling the doc and helping our committees. Um, with that control.
So with the doc in particular, I guess what I was also seeking was. Kind of validation that my understanding was correct, so that moving forward, I know what I can do. Because to me, it's an, oh, it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. For a document to be altered out of a meeting beyond what was discussed in the meeting and then brought back. As if it is the. Whatever, yeah, so we need to like. Uh, how would these next drafts move forward, especially because they're ordinance and code and it's really important? Whoever is in control of that, like, I'll be happy to help manage it, but like, we need to make sure that we're not doing that.
But as liaison, that's kind of one of our tasks, is to make sure that our committees, our bodies, you know. Follow the meeting back, you know, and, and they don't do that, so, so, you know, sometimes we may have to just say, hey, I'm sorry, you can't. We can't, we can't do it that way and you're flying, you know, so here's how we do it, and I know it's, I know it's kind of a problem, you know, kind of a. You know, I'm convoluted and drags things out, but it's the proper way to do it.
Yeah, and if staff can support us on that, because I. Brought this stuff up before and basically been kind of like. Steamrolled and um. It's just like, it's not really my place, right, like, we need support from the people who are designated as the, like. Specifically the city manager is like our. Person who's supposed to keep us in line with the Open Meetings Act at all times, and so, um. You know, because there's other, there's been other things that I've seen as the liaison method, I'm like, whoa, we're supposed to do it a certain way and.
Oh, I can tell you, as, as staff, we do not change these documents. So whatever you put in, if there's misspelled words, if it's bad grammar, we don't change anything. If we do anything, we're gonna make our own document and put it in there just like we did yours. With the PMZ, there were three. Documents that they were looking at when they were um.
Or an interview.
Or an interview, excuse me, or an interview had three documents that they were working off of. One. Live notes. One was with the chairman and one was with, with another committee. They all three were taking notes at that meeting and changing it on the go. The, we put the. Ordinance in that, that the committee chair had, and that's what went into the. Document. So that's how that, I mean, that's how that, we went with the committee chair. So we didn't change anything, it was, there were numerous documents being edited at the same time. By different people of the committee. And so, we went with.
Well, the whole story is that.
It weren't.
Three minute, three meetings prior, and you were not city manager yet, there was nobody taking notes for them. And they were suggesting all these changes and I said, hey, I'm not doing anything in these meetings, why don't I keep live notes for you all? Everyone's, yes, 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 right? The chairperson at the time was like, well, I want to keep my own notes as well, and they, they more or less did. That chairperson was no longer the chairperson two meetings later. Those handwritten notes often lacked. Full information, for example, there was significant changes made to like the dog portion of it. That weren't there and committee members brought it up and we said. And we said redirect, look at the live editing notes, which were supposed to be broadcasted on the screen, so that they could verify. That what they were saying was going into this note document is really, yeah, great, typical way to be keeping notes. That note document was submitted to the chairperson. The draft with like all the red lines that they could see, and then a cleaned up version of it, right, which all the red lines removed. That was not included in the packet at all, it was completely removed. Chairperson sat down with city staff and spent an hour or so creating a new document. Based on their handwritten notes, which had significant variation from the live edit document. That was taken during the meeting, which also did not align with their meeting minutes. That whatever staff wrote down as the meeting minutes did not align with the document that was in the packet. I brought up my concerns with city staff. Nothing was done, in the meeting I brought up concerns about one specific item. They made some adjustments, then they said, oh, but we talked about this other thing. But if you look at their meeting minutes, it's not in the meeting minutes, so I don't know who talked about it or when they talked about it. But to me, it was just, it's a concerning item, right, because. We have, we have to have some kind of accountability and tracking. The third document being talked about was Mr. Miller took a document and reformatted it. And there were no real significant other changes, he just was like, we could fit this on one page if we reformatted it. And he requested that it be considered, also left out of the packet, which goes back to that bigger concern of. The communication policy and how much, say, a chairperson has over a packet. A member of a committee should, should be able to submit something for consideration, and that be honored, in my opinion. Um, whether or not, whatever document I kept, whatever, what was concerning to me was the, the changes. That happened, and then the final version was presented as a culmination of all of their work. And when one member brought up, hey, there's changes here, they were basically said, whoa, no, that's. That's not, you know, we talked about it and we took it off, and that never happened in any meeting. Of openly. So that's my concern, and I just want to like, clear the air that we all have a basic understanding that that can't happen. We can't have documents changed outside of open meetings, once they made it to an agenda and we're moving forward with it. There has to be integrity there.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that, I'm surprised. I mean, this, this seems like one of those sort of perfect storms of, of inexperienced volunteers. You know, trying to legislate and, and mistakes are made, we need to do a better job of, of. Keeping them in line, but, you know, that's one of the things, we, we've gone through all the training, they're supposed to go through the training. Um, uh, but, you know, we deal with this a lot more than they do, they need our guidance, they need our help, they need us to. To keep them and we need staff's help, you know, keep them, keep those kind of things from happening, but you are gonna get. Sometimes some volunteers that are. Um, have a, a strong will, or, you know, just like going off in a different direction, and. You know, if we need to, if they need to be removed. You know, whether they're out of control, or if they just, if we just need to have a, a open meeting session with them, bring them back in for some further training. You know, listen to that, but, but one of the things that is always on my mind is that we, we are, we're all volunteers here. You know, we've only got two non-volunteers right now, um, and, and, um. And we all working really hard, and you know, even, even the committees that we have now. Are essentially brand new, I mean, you know, we had, we had, you know, parts in wreck sort of, and they. Kind of went away and they kind of came back, P and Z is solid, I mean, they have been. But we've had a bunch of new people that are like, oh, you know, it's like, there, there are real rules to this, I mean, this is like the law. And it's like, you have to gently bring them along and, and help them to understand that, that, you know, what they're doing is. Is, you know, big work, um, and it's not, it's not like, it's not like. You know, the, being a member of the, of the garden club and being a committee of the garden club or something, you know, where, you know. It's not even Bob's rules, it's like. Just. Guidelines, yeah, so we, we, you know, we, we try our best to get that across, I mean, but.
So I feel like that's a good time for like the redlining to come into play. The like use of colors of like highlighting if you're adding a section, or like we've done cover sheets. That kind of stuff is gonna be really important as we move forward with like this kind of stuff. Um, so.
Uh, I think two things to help out, one is redlining, of course, uh, for all the changes, and two is the adoption of. Of, of documents before they're completed. Like if you do, like it's a two-page document, and I, and I think a lot of the issue was in that one was. They did have the document and they approved the changes that they made, rather than waiting till the next time just to approve. The whole document, and so they were, um, did you all work in on the two or three meetings? I forgot.
For, I mean, it went on for a while, but the reason they did that.
But every time that they did it, every meeting, it was another motion to accept the changes. That they did in that meeting, rather than have a complete document, here we go, let's go vote on the complete document. So I think redlining, yes, is important, and uh, uh, voting on one document, rather than. Voting on a document for each meeting.
And a revision date at the bottom.
Yeah, and a revision date as a.
So that, we, we kind of disagreed on that, because that to me is how you protect. The changes is that you all collectively agree, we've made these changes, we accept them. And we acknowledge them, and then you move forward, and that next version, so this is really important, and we're getting to this, because. As we move forward with like the draft of like, let's say, one fifty-four, right, council approves certain changes and then sends it to someone else. Those changes need to be incorporated in the document that goes to that other person.
Correct, but that does not mean that they have to adopt those changes that council should do them.
They're very part of.
Because there's, don't, the, 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 the committees are separate from council. So council will give them a charge to, uh, but they review the, the one fifty-four. Plus that, or whatever it may be. You give them, we give them that document, they look at it, they can change it. And they can vote on it, and then they send it to council, and it's presented to council. As it's written, and council is to change it for the final time, just like the, um, short-term risks. So it was given to P and Z, they came up with an ordinance. They passed it, it was given to council, and council didn't do it, they. They had a different option, or they could accept that SDR document, but change wording in that document. However, they wanted to do it.
The fact is, they're working on an approved document from the body. You know, the body is, has signed off on it, says, okay, this is what we think is yours.
And so, like, when the tree board made changes to the tree ordinance, the tree ordinance didn't change itself, because that's a council. That, that document doesn't get to be changed by other boards, but what was created was a report from the tree ordinance. With their suggested changes, and then that came forward like that.
Correct.
As a bundle, but like, when the ad hoc group gives something to council, if council decides to make changes, those go into effect. Then whoever they send it to, that's where my concern becomes. Uh, what, what is the method for reporting the next level of changes? Is it a separate sheet of paper that's like, these are our suggested changes? If it's the lawyer, he will likely redline and make track suggestions, is what I've seen, I've seen them doing in the past.
It was, it was the same thing with the minimum lot sizes, those two documents that they received. Those two documents came from council, and that's what they received, because that's what was passed on from council when you all approved it. To, to P and Z, y'all approved the. No, no, it, 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 it approved in council in January. The minimum lot sizes, that, that, that y'all agreed that this should be in the, that ordinance. And that they should keep doing it, and so that's when it went to P and Z, and then that's when they started. The minimum lot, or that's when they kept going to minimum lot sizes. Because council agreed that they wanted to go forward with that, and so that is what they passed, and that is what they sent to council at the last council meeting. For y'all to vote on and.
It went to the ad hoc work group.
And I forgot what y'all voted for on most of the lots, but it was a council last meeting. And that's because of the past P and Z that you sent to them, and. They did make, I guess, changes because of the required from, just, once again, we don't change stuff. That report came from P and Z. And it said, and it said, we're team two fifty.
Way off topic. Well, that error was pointed out, nobody, there was never an opportunity to correct that document, first off. We didn't send it back to P and Z, it actually went to the ad hoc work group to incorporate with the one fifty-four draft. So when P and Z brought it back up for a public hearing, that was news and surprising for everybody.
Andy, 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 the chairman of the committee, he signed off on that document as, to its validity. And to its correctness, staff didn't sign off on that. That was Andy's signature giving that to council. We did not change it, because that was not our document, that was P and Z's document.
He emailed it to us.
But that's not even P and Z document, I made that document as part of the cop line ages ago, and then.
It was Andy's, okay, we can disagree on that, it might have taken some. The, 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 the report that P and Z sent you. With all the dates. Is that what you're talking about? Okay, that's what I'm talking about, what you were presenting from P and Z, the report, which is required report, was given to you by P and Z.
Right, yes, sir.
And that is what was presented to you, and that's how you went forward on the minimum lot sizes.
We're having different time, time frames, I think, but go on.
So, I mean, we can take this doc, the minimum lot size document, in fact, Linae has it, the, the image. For example, in that, a basic typo was found. A typo should be corrected the minutes it's found, there's no rea, you can't not correct those, in fact, that's something the lawyers is. Gonna talk about, a non-substantive error should be corrected when it is discovered, and that is not something that's in conflict with any. Um, yeah, yeah. Change it, and before we get really defensive, the point is to talk about. Please, like, so we're all on the same page and we understand what's going on, because changes were made. By, in the ordinance review document.
Or she requested the chair, not by staff.
She's a different person than you.
The last thing, you, yeah, I listened to the video twice, just to make sure. Um, the very end of the video, you made the offer to do the things that you. Finally did, which was the, the redline, um, you know, with the changes that they talked about in that meeting, and then you even offered to make a cleanup document. That they didn't agree to accept it at that last meeting. That I thought was odd, but then the chair told me that. She's making an executive decision, they're going, that, that needs to be finalized, and. They've talked about different, uh, versions of each of the items, uh, she took out, um. Stuff that like, if, like the tree items, that's already on a permit, so. She took that out and then discussed it at that meeting, but across her documents, it proposed document. And then that's what got put in the packets.
So in the future, the items that she chose to remove should be on there. And redline, that's what we're talking about, is the procedure of what's appropriate.
That's what I'm trying to get us to quit being defensive and talking about some of these specifics of, okay, a bunch of stuff has happened. We understand that, what we're here to talk about is process.
Right.
You know, what is the process, so that these things go through smoothly in the future? It's not, you know, while you did this and you did that, I wouldn't, you know, we gotta get past that. And get into what's the best way to handle it, and that's what we've sort of been trying to talk about, what's the best way to handle this stuff, best way to handle it. Redline, you have one document, it goes through its changes, you can do all the things that have been, that have happened to it from beginning to end. Um, and then when the, when it's finally ready to go and be voted on, you get the final copy, you know, that's a click of work.
That's what I submitted to ordinance review for them as the person they said should keep the notes, yes.
So I like to, so there's. In my mind, in my mind, there's a distinction between what council approves. So if council votes, it makes a change for it on, and then they made that change, and then they send it to another committee. That changed, that council had just a vote, and they voted to change the document before they sent it to the committee. The committee gets that change document as the final document at that point, because council voted for it. The committee can make changes, and then it's like redlines, but those are recommendations, and I think should be more like a report, like. We want, we, we see this, you know, we're gonna move this, we wanna do this, we wanna do this, they send it back, so we have, council gets back. Their change, original form of the document, and then the recommendations. Correct, then council can do whatever they like, correct.
Right, so she's talking about it.
You're talking about within.
Y'all are talking about two different.
We're talking about the exact same thing.
Originated document, and then this was.
Let's say, Jeff's a committee, he sends a document to council. Council looks at that document, makes some changes, and then they send it to this other committee, and then, I know.
Why said it doesn't, no, because you make changes, why are you sending, no.
I know, I, I agree.
You should, you should give, you should give the committee a thing to look at or whatever, send it to P and Z, or not P and Z, because they kind of have their own thing. Let's say you send something to, okay, and say, we want you to look at, um, adding a water park. Okay, we want a water, look at water park. We want you to look at a splash pad. That's what council sends to the committee, parks looks at it, they may write, write something, put together this great presentation, and they all approve it. And they send it to council, okay, you tell them what to, kind of what to do, you give them directions, they come up with an ideal, good, bad, or indifferent. Hopefully, the liaison counsels them and says, council ain't gonna do a pool, they'll probably need to look at a splash pad. Okay, make it go with a pool, if they want to.
Liaisons shouldn't do that. Council, a council liaison.
Can you say, can you say, council gives it to them, and they say, we want a, we want a water park. And then they come up with a splash pad, and they recommend that to council, comes to council with a splash pad. Y'all decide, no, we want a pool, they'll pass it and it's done. You don't say we want a pool and then give it back to the parks to reduce, no, it, it's already parks, they recommended the splash pad, it comes to you. And it's a pool, it's none of this going back to them, once it.
Yeah, but granted, we have this ad hoc work base, so the council has, especially when it comes to the chapter one before. Council has said, okay, we vote for that, include this chart in that document. But then P and Z after, after council did that, P and Z did this other thing, and we're like, well, but we already decided on this.
Y'all did. Y'all can't decide on the minimum lot sizes until you have your public hearing.
We decided to include a chart.
Okay, into our, they don't have to include the chart. That is their prerogative, they are a separate ordinance, they are separate from you, you can recommend.
Well, we said, okay, so what we said was, yeah, we want this chart in one fifty-four or whatever number. We want this chart there. The chart's gonna be there, it's done. P and Z says, hey, I'm, we're looking at these numbers, we want to have some say in it too, they can't say what goes in there, if the chart goes in there or not. All they can say is, we disagree with the numbers, or we agree with the numbers, or whatever, they can do that on, they can do that on their own. Send it back and say, we think these numbers are right, council says, you know, good idea. You know, good idea, we'll update the chart, or we can say, no, you know.
Yeah, we'll try to stay same as the chart.
I mean, P and Z wants to look at minimum lot size.
Oh, absolutely.
And to be clear.
But it doesn't bind on us.
It's not gonna be that chart, it's that, those numbers going into our existing zoning charts. Cause we don't, you don't need that little graphic in the code, the idea was to put in the lot sizes into our existing zoning charts and code. Cause they're already in there.
But that's.
Yeah, we know regardless.
I know.
One of the points that you made earlier Jeff, I think, that was trying to make. Some of this comes down to a lack of information. Or, you know, an untrained volunteer committee, I know that was my case with the road panel. I thought, oh, that's the way things are done, but that was not right. It was the committee that should have sent things forward to the council where it kinda got a little skewed, but. I think so, it's not malicious as it is, just.
Yeah, there's, there's something that, there's something, I, I go back to a meeting in here that was kinda contentious about budget time. And, and, you know, mistakes were made, you know, and people in the audience were like, you made mistakes. And council member Hein says, you know what, we've been working really hard here and, you know, you know, right, purpose. Let's show a little grace, you know, I just think we need to show a little grace and say, listen, people are gonna make mistakes, they're up to, up to help. Fix it and to make sure that, you know, nobody does anything just like.
No, but I think, right, I think the point of this is not to blame anyone.
No, not, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, no, but I just wanna make sure that that's clear and it's just, so my, my understanding is, I like the idea of committees having important. We have our next item, this idea of communication document that I guess um. We're working on. Ordinance, yeah, so I think maybe we can even add that layer, not that I'm giving direction, cause we can't do that in a workshop, that idea of. Ordinance versus recommendation or draft ordinance versus recommendation like that, we maybe somehow create a. Kind of form that P and Z gave us, they gave us a report, so it's pretty of what things are being changed. And so that we maybe asks. Committees to send a report rather than just the liaison and rather just checking the minutes and then having to.
I would, I mean, if I'm a liaison. And I'm giving my council report as liaison, you know, I don't want to be the one that had written that.
No, I, that's why, when I get reports.
I wanted the chair, chair and vice chair to.
I just read minutes if I can or I just, I will write down.
No, that's a great idea, we can get them to, um, like, I, I know, I believe. Um, maybe the next one we'll get from the parks board, bring them to do some, some stuff. And so on that would be uh a report from the parks on what they approved, what they have sent you to consider. Along with the presentation on the stuff, they will have a, a. Report on what they're giving you.
Especially if it's something that we council gave to them.
So, to go back to the point of why I brought this up, with also just. Like I said, I'm likely gonna be hearing some pretty big documents between multiple parties here. And I just wanted to know essentially, you know, how much flexibility there truly is, right? So it sounds like we should have none ideally, in that any changes would be very well documented and even in maybe a separate page. Because it's like, if I learn something between one meeting to the other and I'm like, this whole section of the code. Is actually, we need to change, I can just make that suggestion that in a separate document, right? I don't need to be edit, I should not be editing the drafts anymore once they get to council from the ad hoc work group, right? This is the general understanding of how this is gonna work moving forward.
All right, or in, in general.
Okay, because if so, if council voted on something, that's.
Becomes official.
Yeah, that's a thing.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of, in terms of the, the whole concept of redlining or inserting comment and things like that, if you're not, if you're not touching. You know, the body of the document and only, you know, have a little. Cartoon balloon out here with, with, you know, the year freezing, you know, that hasn't changed the document. As long as it's up to the same topic, yeah, but I think if you wanna say, okay, paragraph six, line three should read this on a separate document. You know, that's, that's fine too, but it's, it's still, now you're, now you've got two different documents going around. Um, that are not connected, you know, and if, if something happens and you lose that, you know, the network is lost. I mean, that's my, that's my opinion, that's not an edict. You know, my, my, my edict is, you know, we need to get a lot of work done. Um, and the, the cleaner that we can make it, the, the better off it will be, but we all have our own personal work styles. And um, and what gets it to council and through council the fastest and the best is the style that we wanna use. And, but I mean, but Lenea's liaison compared to, you know, Chris's liaison or Bob or, you know, all of y'all. You have your different styles and each committee is, I mean, it's a different animal too. You know, so, and you have some chairs that are very strong. Um, and that's something that you know, you know, and it's like. You know, you just have to, you just have to deal with, I mean, I'm getting fun with that, I'm having fun with that, it's a lot to do that. Um, committee, cause, cause, I mean, they're done books, you know, they're smart, going after it, you know, so. Um, but, but from process standpoint, which is what we're trying to figure out, right? I mean, around that, for the process, to me, the more that we can keep. You know, a document flowing through the system with all of the changes and then be able to say, okay, we said this. We reject that, we accept this, we reject that as council, vote on that, it passes final version. You know, that's what gets signed. I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah, I, I think we're out, I know, at the general understanding of, I mean, obviously. Certain situations are gonna arise and there's gonna be questions, but that was, that was my concern, as a situation came up, led to questions. Kind of resolved in a way that I was like, wait, is this. You know, and then it's gonna retain specifically to me moving forward in this other area. So I wanted to have a good understanding of like, because I'm gonna need staff to support. With these chapters moving around and.
Where, where are we moving these chapters to?
Well, the ad hoc work group will likely submit them to council first based on the discussion we had about proper communication and flow of things. Because the ad hoc work group was created by council to make these documents for council, so they're gonna go to council first. Council then has the discretion to decide where they go next, based on our last workshop, council might decide they should go directly to the lawyer. Or council might say, we want P and Z's feedback first on them, um.
Are these completed documents or are they?
Okay, so.
Completed drafts.
So, so as a suggestion, you've got a completed draft. Joint workshop of the ad hoc committee and council um to go through. To go through the red line and say, yeah, this is over and but doing a workshop. You know, don't send it, so it has to sit over here for a month and then come back over here and sit for a month and then go back over there and sit for a month, that we can. Do this and not two months on the process.
Also, council allowed to meet with P and Z.
But, and it's still just a joint.
But we're actually allowed.
Yeah, it's just a, you know, we can be with, we can be, wondering with everybody.
Idea of like representatives from the ad hoc, probably us, because the other two are citizens. Doing joint workshops as we move through wherever it goes and having it projected and like. I mean, we have this technology, we should be using it, there's no reason why we have to edit a document after we leave a meeting. And then everybody have to remember what was talked about and we, you know, and we can project this stuff and do it live and everybody's saying, yes. This is what we talked about, stand.
Kind of what we did a lot with the call plan.
Yeah, that's exactly what we did.
Yeah, just to make, you, you bring, we, we have a workshop, it gets a. From a blessing, it goes to P and Z, P and Z looks over, makes whatever recommendation they want to. They give that recommendation to council, then it goes to, need to have a public hearing, with public hearing and then we have. The vote and it's done and it's ordinance and it's, when it comes to council, it is ordinance form. It is written in an ordinance that it automatically goes into the code.
But it goes to P and Z. Then, but it goes to P and Z with the work, bring the work. This is, this is what we decided, you know, this is what we want to look at.
This is the ordinance that is written, how it is written, and they look at the ordinance written out and they'll. Do whatever P and Z does and it needs to do and then they'll make their recommendation on that written ordinance to council. And if it's pretty much aligned, then council's in and out, it votes on it and we're done with it. We're not, we don't have to send it back to P and Z or another committee, it's workshop, P and Z, council, done.
I like the joint workshop idea, that's so really, and I think. Thank y'all.
Knocking them out, here we go, everybody good?
Yeah.
Um, I don't remember, F is the um review of agenda items, ordinance of the documents by legal council staff part of council meetings. Discussion we've had, so where, where do we stand on that?
So, this, this came up because after we left the last meeting, it was a remaining question I had was. And it actually even came up in the last ordinance review meeting and that, um. I'm just, I'm unclear about what level of preparation is expected or needed or required for each meeting. Because we keep talking about, oh, we'll send it off to the lawyer for review, but it's like, if Roger's coming to our meeting. And supposed to be able to talk about items on our agenda, shouldn't he have reviewed it? Or like, if portions of the code are coming up in somebody's agenda, like, in theory. We shouldn't then also have it, an item that says, and please review stuff, does that make sense? Like, I'm just not kind of, I guess, understanding at what level or depth of review is just basic requirement. And then what the purpose of these additional report requests are.
I can bring up an example, um, so you, and we're gonna be dealing with it next, the, the stifle. Agreement, so people, that, so there is a contract in our agenda. And if I remembered correctly, I thought it was interesting when um the city attorney said, I have not reviewed this yet. And I went, huh, cause then I made me think, well, I can't actually approve it right now. Even though you were asking, because I'd want hit, I'd have to do this recommendation for our city attorney to review it. Before I could feel like it could be, make sense, before I could.
I don't think. I forgot what specific question you asked, um, but he wasn't gonna comment on it.
Right, I haven't seen the contract, so I can't, it was, they were talking about i- if there was any, any. Maybe compensation to them for work performed, you know, within the contract.
Right, right, you wanted, you wanted a second opinion from, from the attorney and he, no, he did not read that.
I think to, I think to Deborah's, you know. Obvious, like, like, if, if something is on the agenda, um, then, you know, routinely. You know, we've had, you know, staff and legal check out the agenda. In my head, it's like, okay, well, hold it, there's a contract down there, I could read that contract. Well, if I'm, if I'm Roger, I should, I should read that contract, but, but if it takes, hey, there's gonna be something on this, on the agenda. Uh, counselor, please read the contract and be ready to, to report on it, you know, just give a heads up, because. You know, people do get busy, if you do that and they, and they go, then you say, you know, you were told to read that contract. Now you, now you've delayed the visit with the council.
Well, that's why, I guess, I was.
I'm just kinda confused because the whole point of having a lawyer sit in the meeting is that they're prepared to give.
Right.
Judgments on the items on the agenda, if when questions come up or like, you know, and Kevin, bless your heart, you are playing catch up right now, so. You know what I mean, like, the idea of, like, you know everything about the ordinance is to the degree the city manager is supposed to, is not realistic right now. But that's what, that's what, there just kinda keeps coming up these moments where it's like, I have to be so prepared for these agendas. And then we're having to like delay to ask for special reports of things or we're having this discussion about sending things for special reports and it's like. If an ordinance or something's in the packet, to me. You come to the meeting having read it.
Well, that's what I said.
Yeah, so that's right, but that's what's happening.
And if it, and if it's not happening, if it continues not to happen, then we say, make sure you do that, I mean, so both, but. We'll get the words of Roger, say, listen, you know, the reason we can get you the agenda in advance is so you can be prepared. To, to talk about anything that comes up on it, you know, from, from legal perspective, now, you know, that means we have to get our agendas. Out, which means that council members, you know, need to, you know, get their agenda items in on time.
I think it's been pretty good.
And you didn't let me finish, um, and then not change them, you know, days later. You know, so, I mean, it's like, if you, if you see something in the agenda, if you submit something to the agenda. And it goes in there, then, then that's great, then we post it, if it's like completely out of whack and we gotta change it, then we go in there and change it. But, you know, it's like, it's like, when, when, if, if it's submitted right and we take it and. Put it into the, the agenda, you know, with everything that's supposed to be there, because it was all submitted properly. Then, you know, we shouldn't even have this conversation and the agenda's out on Wednesday. And, you know, staff and Roger have already taken a look at the, at the pieces of it, now we could. I, I talked to Roger about having a, a woodcreedtx.gov domain account. Just for being able to get into documents in advance and looking at them instead of emailing them off or whatever, so, you know, that's a possibility. But um, but, you know, if, if we do a better job, which is on me as much as anybody, of getting. You know, in here, taking a look at what y'all have submitted, you know, getting it in order, you know. You know, if you've included in the packet, it should be there. Um, as far as, as far as the other things, it's just like, I, I don't know, I don't know why, I mean, some of this Muni code, some of this like, you know. Wonky software, but, you know, what, what, you know, what we get from y'all is, yeah. Supposed to.
But, so on that.
And then, and then, and then staff, they should, shouldn't have reviewed it and make sure that everything was, was in order. Make sure, you know, staff needs, you know, police gotta work, all right, you know, there's, there's stuff that you do in the crew reading part of it. You know, just to make sure everything works, but if Muni code is, is messing up something that, that worked before, there's nothing that staff can do about. That in case that maybe change software.
Um, so on that point, there, there might be a background issue, so last agenda, I did actually submit three items for the CD ED big room.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, when we reviewed them together, only two showed up. Remember, then we had to.
Yeah, then we.
Had to work that, we had to.
Now, there's two, but you misplaced, one of them was.
So I went back into my, so, cause I saved my, what I sent away and I actually did do send you three. And that's what was odd.
Well, then, there were, I, I remember there being three things, but I think, I thought y'all said that y'all discussed it and, and two of them could go into one.
Only two showed up, and so I said, well, then there are three, we still, we need to work this out, so we like merged.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm remembering then, but there were originally three, I know.
Yeah, but he was only seeing two and that's why I was like, oh, is there something going on in the background in the file?
We brought it up, did we not, on the computer, didn't we?
No, but, cause you, you, we talked about it afterwards, cause I was like, wow, this should have been three separate items, not because I knew. Because I was like, this is weird and then, yes.
Okay, so, so if, if the agenda submission form doesn't work.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the problem is, is that it's not, it's not doing the job. You can still, I mean, with, with what we talked about earlier today, you know, we can just take it back to, this is the agenda item that I want. On agenda item, paper, official agenda item, you know, that goes in the file, here's all the documents. That are going with it and you do it manually instead of by, by form.
We, we will work on the agenda, there are a lot of personal errors and computer errors that are happening and I don't. Cause like that one is on the backside of Muni code where it was doing that stuff. Um, and so we will take more time to review those. And make sure that, cause like the HTML, we sent them, but why is this happening, they're like, we don't know.
And now you can see in the folder too, of like what documents are there. So, to give, to get back to this point, uh, again, why I'm concerned is because we have the ad hoc work group working on these massive chapters. And there's this big discussion about like, when we're supposed to get lawyer review or this or that. And the ad hoc work group is going to be making a recommendation very soon, filled with a packet of materials. So do they need to basically tell council or does council then need to also say, please have staff and Roger review?
As an ad hoc group, I mean, you, you've been given a special assignment, I mean, by definition. You know, and, and so some of the rules that would go to the tree board. You know, and and so some of the rules that would go to the tree board. Or P and Z are gonna be a little bit different here, you know, you've got this massive document. That you're, you think you're ready to take to council. You know, I would have that in Roger's hand and staff's hands, you know, weeks before council meeting. You know, give him, give him a chance to really look at it, you know, don't, don't say, well, it's on the agenda, go read it and be prepared to discuss. I mean, I mean, jump the, jump the gun just a little bit, um and then just, you know, let them, you know, if it's something that needs to be reviewed. And something like that, I mean, I think we all agree.
Can I ask a question then on, the distinction is because this ad work, ad hoc work group is council. Driven in this, in that way. But, oh, because only council can spend staff money, not spend their office, like um. Ordinance reviews, many can't go, hey, city attorney, you know.
Not without, not without, permission.
Not without council's direct permission. Counselor hasn't actually given ad hoc committee that direction.
For those chapters now.
For those chapters, so I, my brain would say, okay, we have a draft. We bring it to council, council goes, how does staff or city attorney re-read this? No, well, let's direct them to do it.
See, I, I.
What we could do before that.
As a council, as a council member and mayor, you know, if if something as. Big and critical as the work of that ad hoc group is coming to me. I wanna know that as many check boxes have been checked as possible. And if that means that Roger or somebody, you know, does a a legal review of it, okay.
But that's spending money.
That that's, that's irrelevant, it's not about spending money, you have permission. You know, you have permission to spend money, but it's like if you just say, listen, we're at this point, mayor. Um, and, you know, we think this is gonna come to council at the X month meeting. Um, and, you know, we just wanna make sure that everything's good to go. Um, we think, have Roger take a look at it real quick, um but, so that it's not like two nights before the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, would be okay that we have approval to do that, that's just like, of course you do.
Yeah, my suggestion will be write your entire ordinance as if it was gonna get approved, okay? Just like with all the code numbers, everything like that, whether you do just one fifty four, you do one fifty four, one fifty five. Whatever in ordinance form, at that time, we take it to Roger, okay, let him look at it. Um, once he looks at it, whatever corrections, then it may have to go back and forth. But once we have that, where where you're good with it and Roger's good with it, then we can have a workshop, okay? Talk it out, get pretty much of all of the. Buying in and everything, then it goes to P and Z, it's pretty much there, because. After P and Z works on it, Roger's gonna look at it again, but it's only gonna, he's only gonna have to look at. One, two, three different things that they changed. And then it will, once he approves it of. P and Z, then it goes to council in in that ordinance form and council gets to discuss it and maybe approve it at that time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and I just appreciate the opportunities, set expectations in advance versus. Getting to a place and then being told to do something else or then there's confusions in the backside and where this is going next, so. Uh, to me, it's been a helpful conversation.
No, I think, I agree, it's, that was good to know because I would have done it differently with how I, I would want. Council approval to spend the money to have it, because it's a big document.
You can send it to me and I can send it to Roger as staff and have staff look at it.
That's what I heard prior to this, that what our policy would be that. Anything that we would send to Roger, we would send to Kevin first to look at it real quick, it's his fault if we spent too much money. Rather than, and that way it goes through him automatically.
Correct.
But it also doesn't remind me that when I come up with a draft. Alone, I knew I could just reach out to the city attorney, but that was different because nobody else was.
Send it to me. I'll look over.
We didn't have you at the time.
Right.
I would just go.
But going forward, send it to me, I'll talk to you, I'll send it to Roger, he'll come back or he'll probably just get with you after we send.
I guess the point I'm making though is the distinction was I was self motivating and I wasn't working with somebody else, where this. Counsel has directed ad hoc committees to do this, so I always keep placing it, well, council is setting the direction. So it's good for us to look at the council.
Well, it's also in your council, so they can most, you know, never mind, we don't wanna touch any of this. That was my one worry about like ha- having a lawyer review fifty something pages of. Code if council's like, we don't wanna change anything.
Yeah, and that.